Good evening. I would like to call this February 20th, 2025 for regular school board meeting to order. The time is now 6:00 PM. The school board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Maple will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Colonel Arthur Roble is on Zoom.
Here.
Colonel Cole.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson is excused. Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the recognition of the 2023 ASA First National Bank Wrestling Champions. There was one district wrestler from Lathrop's girl wrestling team who captured the state championship title at the 2023 ASA First National Bank Alaska Wrestling State Championship held in December. Lathrop head coach, West Bockert, and Coach Jason Webb will make the presentation.
All right, uh, where's Megan? Megan, you gotta come up here, kiddo. All right. Uh, well, can you hear me? I'm pretty loud. All right, so anyways, we're here to recognize, uh, Megan Spencer. She's a senior at Lathrop. This is her, uh, this was her final year wrestling for Lathrop and representing. She's been a big part of the history at Lathrop, uh, girls wrestling. Lathrop's the only high school team in the history of ASA to win three straight titles in a row as a team, and she was a part of that. And she is the first girl to win three straight titles for Lathrop High School as an individual. Megan is currently ranked number 27 in the nation, um, in women's freestyle at 114 pounds. And, uh, now on top of all those, uh, athletic, um, attributes, she is, she, she currently, last quarter, had a 3.0 GPA. And, uh, I don't think I've ever saw anything over 3.6. And the girls, three years in a row that they were state champs, they also won the academic award from ASA at the same time being state champions. So she was a, she played a big role in, in those achievements. But that's, I mean, I could sit here and talk forever, but it... She's a pretty outstanding kid. She's a hard worker in all aspects, academically and athletically. She, uh, her, you know, we don't know what her future is because we're trying to push her to wrestle at college, but she wants to get in the union. She's really digging the, I think you just finished your electric, your week at the Electrical Union doing?
No, I'm doing it next week.
Next week, okay. So, uh, she's really interested in that, and as she does that, she plans on, uh, still competing as a resident athlete at, um, the local, uh, national training program here in Fairbanks. So, um, great kid again, and, and we, I think it's awesome that we took, got an opportunity to recognize her.
The next item is a musical performance from the West Valley High School Choir. Members of the West Valley High School Choir will perform under the guidance of Gwendolyn, Gwendolyn Brazier, the choir director.
Thank you very much. All right. Um, so like I said, my name is Gwendolyn Brazier, and I'm the director of the West Valley High School Choir. West Valley High School Choir has a history of, um, not existing actually. And so last year was our first year back after being cut in series of cuts. And so we're very proud to have so many people as part of the choir this year. And so we wanted to acknowledge that. We are going to sing a song called "There Is Sweet Music", which is by Alfred Lloyd Tennyson and written by Galthrop as a piece. And so we're going to present that for you now. Thank you very much. Um, and we want to acknowledge that we have our Music in Our Schools Month concert next Wednesday at Haring Auditorium, which involves elementary, middle school, and high school choirs all singing together with the first of our concert series for Music in Our Schools Month, actually starting at North Pole High School on Tuesday, which is the band concert. So we hope that folks can come out for those series of concerts. Thank you very much for having us.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Consent agenda items are marked with an asterisk and are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. They have a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items?
Second. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is public comments on reports and non-agenda items. During this section of the agenda, the school board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This time is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will make note of topics, though no official action will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and for future potential action. Board members will not be responding to comments or questions made by the public, but may ask questions of the speaker for clarifying purposes only. Concerned citizens should initially discuss matters with the superintendent or designee first. After the superintendent or designee has heard the concerns, then it may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route those concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time when that item is introduced for action or discussion. Once an agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the school board office by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Those who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour limit, uh, time limit has been reached. Public testimony will be heard from citizens in the order in which they have signed up. A signup sheet is available in the boardroom prior to the start of the meeting for those who have not signed up in advance. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide, provide their first name, spell their last name, and state their area of residence. And clearly, we will have a lot of public testimony tonight, so to ease anybody's concerns, the board will allow public testimony, will make a motion to continue past that one-hour mark, and everyone will still have their three minutes, and we will have the ability to let everyone be heard. Um, I, we have signed up already, and if you have not already signed up, we will then open it up for whoever wants to come sit in the seat. The first person who has signed up, and my apologies if I butcher some of these names, Diana Lein, Leinenberger? So if you, yep, come up, and then you're just going to state your first name, spell your last name, and you give your general area of residence, just Fairbanks is fine. And we will start your time.
I was rushing. I was like, what are the chances I'd be the first person? Okay, hello. My name is Diana Leinberger, L-E-I-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. And I live in Goldstream Valley. My daughter goes to Pearl Creek Elementary School. Of course, my primary concern is that Pearl Creek remain open. My daughter has had an amazing, has had amazing teachers at Pearl Creek, and Principal Henderson does a fantastic job. We feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity for our daughter to go to school there. I'm not going to spend my time here today focusing on Pearl Creek, however. There are many here who will do that more eloquently than I can. I'm here because I believe any school closing is a detriment to our school system and the communities that make up the larger Fairbanks community. I'm opposed to any school being closed. And I'm frustrated that the board and district are in this position of what I consider a Sophie's Choice. I'm frustrated that the state has failed in its constitutional responsibility to maintain a system of schools open to all children in the state, and they have failed by not adequately funding schools primarily through the BSA. But the board and the district have no control over the BSA, so I won't speak to that. I intend to contact my legislators on that issue. I will also continue to advocate for a tax cap increase for education funding at the local level. I do want to express my concern over class sizes. The school closings are getting a lot of attention. I understand that. My daughter goes to Pearl Creek. But I'm also concerned about class sizes. Increasing class sizes only compounds any performance issues and the quality of education. So where does that leave us? I've been trying to educate myself on the budget and the process, and I have some questions that I wanted to ask, but I'm not sure if this is the place for that. Okay. I, um, went to the, so I know we're going to have the tax cap vote in May, but I believe that funding would be for next fiscal year if it passed. And the BSA that's being debated in the legislature would also be for next year's budget. I do believe the borough has 13 million that they can apply to this year. So that's my first question. Can that 13 million be applied to this year's budget? The FY25 that you're working on now?
So we're not going to be able to answer, but we'll write these down. So continue.
Okay. So really, that's my question, and I'm just starting to educate myself on the, uh, funding process for education. So I probably don't have any questions that you can answer. But what I'm really wanting to know is what can we, is there anything that we can do today with this budget cycle that will stop the school closures and keep class sizes down? Is there any funding source available for this budget? Or are we really stuck with two school closures and larger class sizes?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Doran?
Are you, are you aware that this year's budget is set? What we are working on right now is for next year, so everything will be in terms of next year's budget. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, so this is for the FY25 budget, right? So would the BSA, so the BSA increase and the tax cap, potential tax, tax cap increase, that would be for next year? Okay. And that doesn't solve all our problems, but it gives us some options. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. And just a reminder, it's board policy. We can't answer questions.
Okay.
So, but we are writing them down, and board members have time for, uh, closing comments and president's reports and other stuff that comes up later. So we're recording those questions, and they'll get to you later.
Great, and, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, next we have Shawna Henderson.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Shawna Henderson, H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, and I reside in Fairbanks, Alaska, in the Goldstream Valley. I am the current principal at Pearl Creek Elementary, a Pearl Creek alumni, and a parent of two students who currently attend Pearl Creek. Pearl Creek opened 40 years ago with the mission to create an environment where students wouldn't just learn, but where the whole child would be loved and nurtured. We have continued this longstanding tradition to build and maintain strong relationships with students and families while also providing a robust academic experience. Today, I am here to advocate for Pearl Creek and to convince the school board to keep Pearl Creek open. Pearl Creek is the fourth-largest elementary school in the Fairbanks-North Pole area with 410 students. We are a short five-minute drive from UAF with a beautiful outdoor space that we use for both before, during, and after-school activities that is unmatched by other local area schools. Pearl Creek is the highest-achieving neighborhood elementary school in the district according to the 2022, 2022 Three Alaska Star reports. Our school climate data from last year shows a 95% positivity rating. Our attendance rate for this school year sits at 90% of all students attending. Additionally, Pearl Creek serves the Fairbanks community by hosting three district-wide programs, a special education preschool program, as well as two classrooms of extended resource special education. We also partner with outside organizations and resources to provide before-and-after-school care for working families. We offer after-school enrichment programs run by volunteers. We collaborate with Calypso Farms and host a harvest festival every September for our families. We carry on 40-year-old traditions like our shoebox parade and the speech contest. We provide outreach activities for our community like our annual steam night. Two years ago, when other neighborhood schools were closed, we absorbed 74 families. And it is not right to have these families impacted and uprooted once again. By closing the doors of Pearl Creek, you would close the heart of this community. Many families have purchased homes in this area to be able to attend Pearl Creek, and many of these families have the means to leave the district, and that would only further exacerbate our declining student population. Lastly, I would like to mention that the Pearl Creek staff stands in solidarity with our colleagues of the other school communities impacted by the recommendations for school closure. We all hope for a future where public education is adequately funded.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Maple?
Moving forward, regardless of how these decisions have to play out, what would you hope to see from the school board to avoid you ending up in this situation again in the future?
Well, as Danette Peterson, the head of FEA, so, um, eloquently wrote in her opinion piece in the paper this morning, the school district does not revenue, generate revenue. And so we're really looking for our local, um, officials and our state officials to fund public education. And so I actually feel quite heartbroken that you are in this position of having to make these decisions, but I feel like it really rests in the state's hands.
Thank you for coming. Next. Next, we have Ms. Nikki Eisman.
Nikki Eisman, E-I-S-A-M-A-N, Fairbanks. This town is in turmoil. People are so upset from one end to the other. And I am seeing that sorrow and confusion turn into anger. And so I have to remind myself and people I talk to that you are not the ones to be angry at, that you are not the same school board and the same administration that closed Nordale and Joy, and I, sorry, I forget which elementary school at Ileson. That it indeed rests on the shoulders of our legislature and our governor for years of neglect of their constitutional mandate. And so I guess I'm just asking if there is sorrow and confusion and frustration in this room that it doesn't turn into an evening of anger at this board. And I've been thinking about this a lot lately. And something else, um, that, you know, I've been paying ridiculously close attention to our local schools for the last 10 years, and so I knew this was coming. I was not at all surprised. And, um, Friday night, I was with a, a parent of two young children, and she had just gotten this email, and she looked at it, and she said, "Did you know about this?" And I was like, "I did." And I, and I could have thought, you know, why, why weren't you paying attention? It's been in the paper. It's been on the news. It was your job to, you know, stay informed. And I thought, no, she was doing her job. She was raising her children. She was starting a business. She was maintaining a home. She was adding to the tax base of this community. And she was doing her job, and she voted, and she was counting on the people she elected at the state level, you know, in the legislature and our governor to do their job. And they are the ones that have really failed us here. I'm not saying that perhaps there aren't some things that could be fixed in the budget. There aren't some tweaks. There are some, you know, questions to be asked. Did we see increased revenue from turning Nordale from a public school into, I mean, there, there are many questions out there. But I guess I just want to reiterate that, um, this community has been failed. So that's what I want to say. And I would love it if one of you would say, "Ms. Eisman, did you know that we're going to have a community forum on such-and-such a day? So that anybody who is in this room who might wonder is when they're going to get some answers, when they'll be able to engage in dialogue, will hear that date and that time." Anybody want to ask me that?
Ms. Marotti?
Ms. Eisman? Uh, is there going to be a community forum that people can attend, and if so, what's the date and time?
No, you have to tell me that. Oh, shoot, I don't know. I need a more thorough question.
Ms. Eisman, were you aware that there is a community forum at Lathrop High School at 6:00 PM on February 27th? And again, on March 11th at North Pole High School at 6:00 PM?
I had forgotten the exact date, so thank you for that.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Our next, uh, person is Jerome Baxter.
My name's Jerome Baxter. I live in Fairbanks, Alaska, here. Live down the swamp, uh, in the Muscher Valley there, close to the Gold, or the, uh, Muscher Trails. I didn't really know what to say tonight. I just wanted to come in and just, um, you know, like, uh, the folks ahead of me said that, you know, it really lies in the state's hands. You know, it goes up to the top. We know who made the cut and all that, and now we're struggling with it. But just talking to some parents, this is just kind of grapevine talk here, so I'm just going to throw it out there and see what you think. The, um, I had one parent say that there was, and I may have, I didn't have enough time to really research this. I called the author of the article in the Fairbanks Daily News-Miner February 7th, said there's $30 million set aside for capital improvements project, and I don't understand too much about that. But he said it wasn't a federal funding. It was tax-based, so I just thought maybe y'all might be able to have, you know, the higher you go, I'm just squeaky wheeling here, and I'm representing myself as a parent here. I have a kid in Pearl Creek at kindergarten, and so any rate, uh, maybe y'all could talk to someone about that, find out where $30 million is going to an animal shelter, which that's, that's fine. And maybe I'm mixing apples and oranges, but again, I just heard it through the grapevine, and maybe someone has enough, uh, they can ask the right people, you know, about that, so that may help us. Moving students from one school to another, um, I was just a little confused about that. If we're taking one school and we're going to close it, well, three, or possibly all three. We close one and move them to another school that's already overcrowded, then that just seems like it's going to, you know, equity and quality education for all students is going to be, you know, kind of diminish. It should be like, maybe quality education because we're so crowded if that happens. So I know there's, I'm just preaching to the choir possibly, but again, I just had an opportunity to speak, just felt compelled to come and talk as a parent. Uh, I've been waiting five years for my son to, uh, get to first grade, and he's finally there. And then, you know, Murphy comes in, Murphy's Law, and anyway, does that. So I'm just kind of a little discouraged about that. So I hope when you do, uh, Mrs. Henderson had said it perfectly, uh, that, um, you know, it's more than just a building. It's more than just a school. It's a community, and, um, it's a powerful school. And, you know, like, teams back here in solidarity tonight, but again, I'm coming and talking as a, as a parent. So any rate, and, um, other than that, this, uh, you know, Pearl Creek is like Little House on the Prairie School. I was transferred on, uh, from University Park years ago and was placed in Pearl Creek in voluntary transfer, but it's the best transfer that ever happened, and, uh, good, solid community out there. So that's all I wanted to say, and, um, appreciate you listening to me, and so just some bullet points. Food for thought. Hope you'll consider keeping Pearl Creek open for those kids. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Sharar.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name's Scott Shire.
Hi, my name is Scott Shire. Last name's spelled S-H-I-R-A-R, and I live in the Fairbanks area. So, this evening, I'm here to speak on behalf of myself, obviously, but also my family. My wife and two small kids attend Pearl Creek, first grade and fourth grade. And I'm here to talk about the information that was circulated last Friday afternoon, obviously regarding the potential school closures. So, the decision, I feel, to close any school in our district, obviously, it's not easy. It's downright tragic. But I'm here to speak specifically about keeping Pearl Creek open. So, closing Pearl Creek, I think it would represent an enormous loss to our community for many reasons. And here, I'm just going to go through and list several aspects about the school that make it special not only to our family, but to many of our friends and our friends' families, but also that just make the school unique more broadly. So, one, the school, and these are a lot of the same points that Mrs. Henderson made previously, but also a couple of extra in here that haven't been mentioned yet. So, number one, so the school has a strong preschool program to help those pre-K students in our community who need extra help or help, extra steps in education before starting kindergarten. Two, the school hosts the Thrive Program. So, that's a before and after-school program, which is invaluable to families who have working parents. And to my knowledge, that program is unique to Pearl Creek. The school fosters a vibrant after-school program as well, supported not only by staff and teachers at the school, but also a strong community of parent volunteers that come in and help out and teach different types of clubs at the school throughout the year. Four, the school is home to Pearl Creek Ski Park. So, that's where students ski for gym class, but also after-school clubs. But then, more broadly, just where the neighborhood in general and community also enjoys winter recreation activities. And then, these trails also connect into neighborhood trails that students often use to walk to and from school on a daily basis. The school garden, which Mrs. Henderson mentioned, part of the community program in partnership with Calypso Farms. So, they host garden and harvest camps there. And then, the school hosts an annual harvest festival at the start of school in the fall. Also, the school is a unique thing. The school is set to receive this summer a new access road, parking lot, and head bolt eaters to facilitate school drop-off and pickup, which is also going to help in turn with air quality in terms of having plug-ins for each cars. So, Pearl Creek, just overall, it mainly serves students in Goldstream Valley and Farmer's Loop neighborhoods. And closing the school would fracture the sense of community that exists among these students and the students that go to Pearl Creek. The school serves as a centerpiece for the neighborhood I live in, and its loss will be felt beyond those families whose students only attend school there, but to the community at large. So, thank you.
Next, we have Christina Truman. And after her, we will have Erin Gunderson. So, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Christina Turman. My last name is spelled T-U-R-M-A-N. I too am a resident of Fairbanks, Alaska. First off, I do want to thank the school board so much for all you do. Super appreciate you, don't envy you. I am also a mother of two Pearl Creek puffins, and I could so easily sit here and join the choir and sing Pearl Creek's praises, but you're going to hear a lot of that tonight. And for me, the more I've thought about it, I just, I can't do that, and here's why. It's because if you don't close Pearl Creek, I won't feel like I won. And if you don't close Two Rivers, I don't think they won. I think we are all losing because we're all sending our kids to school in a state that does not fund education adequately. And unless we look at that underlying bigger issue, we will be right back here next spring having these same debates, and we'll be making our school board make these same horrible decisions. So, we have to look at the bigger picture. So, when I look at the Alaska State Constitution, it says that our legislature is obligated to establish and maintain public school systems for all students. So, when I hear our governor continually point to charter schools and homeschools as where we want to put a bunch of funding, and at the same time say he will not support the BSA, which funds all students, I am genuinely perplexed at this point. He talks about the academic success of these charter schools as to why we should fund them more. And do not get me wrong, I think they're a great option, but they are not an option for everyone. To attend a charter school, you come from a privileged family. You have parents that can drop you off and pick you up every day. And we all know, every study says, like socioeconomic status and parental involvement are so key to academic success. So, we're literally pooling kids that have that advantage, and then saying, "Wow, this is strange. This school is just killing it, like amazing. We should all do this. We can't all do it." That's just the truth. So, our government, they have to represent everyone. Our legislature does, just like the school board. You guys represent every single kid in the Fairbanks interior. They don't just represent our children. We're the fired-up parents. A lot of us are probably well-educated as well. So, I just wanted us all to take a moment and think about all the kids in Fairbanks who don't have parents here tonight, that come from a family that don't have the resources, the time, the energy, or maybe even the knowledge to know this is happening. Maybe the kid, like, has a single parent, right, works two jobs. Like, if you told them, "Hey, you should just get your kid in a charter school," they would laugh at you, like, it's not an option. Or the kid who has a neglected family life, and so, the only positive interaction they're going to have with an adult that's invested in their education is at that public school they take the bus to. And our governor is saying, "Let's shove those kids into classes with 30-plus kids and give more money to charter schools." It's just, it's crazy to me. You're not going to hear from those kids. You're not going to hear from their parents. So, I thought maybe I'd take a second to try to just bring some attention to them. And frankly, they're counting on our legislature. I'm very aware you guys don't hold the purse strings, but they're counting on us too as a community. So, don't get me... Like, I'm not yelling at you. I'm yelling with you. We all have to do what we can to raise that BSA and to increase the tax cap. Yes.
I've got to apply the rules to everyone.
Yes. In the worst-case situation, if my kid's school gets closed, I hope that the new school they go to is properly funded.
Thank you. Are there any questions? After Mr. Gunderson, we have Christina, I want to say Pousch.
My name is Erin Gunderson, G-U-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I am nervous. I am a Pearl Creek puffin. I know you all did not take this job to close schools. I understand the math. Closing schools is not a mathematical decision. The math doesn't decide to close schools. You decide to close schools. You decide, and the math follows your choice, not the other way around. You are here to make hard decisions, not to defer to budget calculations that provide you an excuse to avoid this decision. Will you leave here and defend the budget calculations that you allowed to usurp your power and claim you had no choice? Or will you come out of this difficult time having used your power to uphold your values and passionately defend your decision to save our schools? We will be behind you in, to defend that decision. You will be alone in your defense and in your conscience if you decide to close schools. You will regret that, and you will harm this community. You can delay. You can wait until you have real budget numbers. Who's going to stop you? You have the power. Don't tell me that you can wait, you can't wait for the state to approve its budget or that you have to follow union rules for layoffs of teachers. The union is not going to sue you because you didn't lay teachers off quickly enough. You make the rules. You make the budget. You have the power, and you decide, not the administrators. They are doing their job, but they don't have the choices that you have. Budgets, all... You get to decide. We elected you to save our schools first. Budgets are a statement of values, and budgets come after you have decided what to do. Do not let your values be dictated by the money. If we wanted our schools governed by money, we would have left the previous board in place. I listened to your work session yesterday, and you are down. You are defeated, and you have given up. You didn't have questions you should have had. You have choices. The administration does not. They're doing their job. They're doing the work with what they have, but you can give them more because you have the power. So, you need to snap out of it. You need to wake up. We chose you for your kindness, for your empathy, and for your intellect. We want you to govern with your values. So, snap out of it, and don't let the money dictate who you are. You tell the budget what to do.
That's time. Thank you, Mr. Gunderson. Catherine Pousch. I might be saying that wrong. Catherine Pousch. Oh, there we go. And then, next will be Jacqueline Mullenbauer.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Push, P-U-S-C-H. I am a parent at Tikusuk Brown Elementary School, and I'm also the school principal. I'm here today to represent Tikusuk Brown and express our concerns and sorrow, oh goodness, for the proposed closure of Emily Ivanoff Tikusuk Brown Elementary School. Here we go. I want to start with telling you about our school, our teachers and our family. Tikusuk Brown is more than a building. It's a family, many of whom are here tonight. Our school cares deeply about our students and our parents. Our families trust and depend on our school. For over 40 years, our school has served as a place of education in the community. Many of our current students can point to their parents on the picture of our opening. Our kids show me. They're very proud of it. That's my mom, and that's my dad, and that's my uncle. Our families have a legacy here. Our school is a longstanding part of our community. And closing it would have an impact not only on our students, but also on our entire community that it serves. Tikusuk Brown is a Title I school. Many of our families struggle. Our, over 50% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. These families already face extra obstacles in providing students, their students with a consistent and quality education. By closing Tikusuk Brown, these already at-risk students will need to travel further to get to school. Families will need to travel further to attend family nights and to be involved in their kids' education. And travel is a barrier for some of our families. If students are moved to Arctic Light, those families would need to have base access to get to their child's school. This could be an obstacle for some of our families as well. I understand the board faces huge deficits, and I know that there are very difficult decisions to be made. As a school district and community, we've gone through this before. Two years ago, we did the same thing, and it's painful, and it's difficult, and it's hard for everyone. If the board decides to move forward with school closures, I would ask that you don't put this off. As hard as that is for me to say, these times are very difficult. Waiting and not knowing is hard. It's painful. Uncertainty and fear fills all of our heads. I would ask the board, again, to think about our families and our staff as we work through these difficult decisions. Make your decisions as quickly as you can. Help us get ready so we can move forward in whatever direction you decide we're going. We need time for planning. We need time to take care of our families and our staff and to prepare for whatever is coming. The last thing I would really like the board to consider is that our school is named for Emily Ivanoff Tikusuk Brown, whose Inupiaq name signifies where the four winds gather, their treasures all, from all parts of the world, the greatest of which is knowledge. She's more than a namesake of our school, her community, I'm sorry, her service to our community and values that continue to guide our school today.
I'm sorry, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question for you, Ms. Marotti.
I'm actually very interested in the history of the name. If you could finish that sentence.
Okay. The, it is a great honor to have her name on our building, and regardless of what happens to our building, I would ask the school board to continue to honor her in a way, and that name in a way that is equal to the namesake of our fantastic school. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. And then, next will be Andrew Allby.
I would like to speak, and I apologize in advance because I am angry. Some of you saw me after Friday, and you know, I'm very passionate.
Could I get you to say your name, spell your last name?
Yes. My name is Jacqueline Muhlebauer, and I even wrote that down. I'm from Fairbanks, Farmer's Loop, Pearl Creek puffin. Today, I want to talk to you about this disgraceful document that was written by our district leadership for FY25 school closure planning. I went through it, and it is full of inaccuracies, and the leadership should be displeased. They should be ashamed. Some have already spoken to this, so it won't linger, but Ann Ween was listed a grant, but Pearl Creek has a $4.5 million DOT grant to improve their driveway that was not listed. The cost savings listed in this document are identical for closing Tikusuk Brown and Pearl Creek. Is this a typo? Reporting hyper-precise numbers is a sign of sketchy accounting. Other schools say that their buildings are in fair condition, but there's no list on how much maintenance is in those buildings. Maintenance, as we learned last night, is deemed by the borough. The schools have no idea what that maintenance is. It isn't maintenance they requested or known. Other schools were listed to be impacted by the closures that happened these last two years. Pearl Creek was also impacted, and that was not listed. We had students come to us from those schools, and they're going to have to move again. The homeschool that the district pays for is not in this document. They have a building. They have salaries. I'd like to see those numbers. And I blame district leadership. I don't blame the school board. As others have said, it is not your fault. You have a bad deal, and I am sorry for that you have to listen to the angry parents that are here. But I want to lay fault with our superintendent. We, they knew this was coming, and it's a slap in this community's face to give us three weeks' notice. Previous closures were detailed. They had stakeholder meetings. We knew exactly why those schools were closing. We should know exactly why these schools are closing. We need the data. School performance wasn't even included in this document. You don't ask the school's district's best school to close and send them to the other schools. That is not okay. That is a disservice to our students. I ask...
I'm sorry, that's time.
Yes, that's time. That's okay. Thank you.
Andrew Allby. Thank you. And next will be Patrick Bronson.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Andrew Allaby, A-L-L-A-B-Y. I live at, off of Yankovic Road here in Fairbanks, and I would just like to share my thoughts about the proposed 2025 budget on behalf of my family, my three kids, one of whom's a Pearl Creek puffin and two... a Pearl Creek puffin, and two of whom hope to be soon. I'm deeply concerned about balancing the budget through school closures, particularly of Pearl Creek Elementary. I encourage the board to look at other ways to address the budget shortfall other than the scorched earth policy of saving five percent of the deficit by extinguishing a vibrant learning community like Pearl Creek. Shutting down Pearl Creek misses the forest for the trees. Perhaps the students and teachers are relocated, but something greater than the sum of its parts is irretrievably lost. Mundane routines honed over years, priceless professional and personal relationships, thriving clubs, before and after-school programs, bustling PTA calendar, volunteerism, and family engagement. I understand school closures are not considered lightly, and adopting a budget under these conditions may be one of the most excruciating decisions of your professional lives. And I'm so thankful to all of you for your service at this difficult time, but please don't miss the forest for the trees, don't unmake school communities that have been forty years in the making. Thank you.
We have Patrick Bronson, and then it will be Allison Mogans, I'm so sorry, Mogenstein.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Bronson. I'm living in, off Farmers Loop. I'm coming here to speak on behalf of my daughter and my son. I cannot speak for every other parent, or I'm not representing every other person in the military now, I need to be clear on that. My children go to Pearl Creek. They go to Pearl Creek intentionally. I moved here, I bought a house, I didn't look at the house because I was in the lower forty-eight, I came here, assumed everything would be good, right? Good school, best one in the district, and that is an accurate assessment of Pearl Creek. Since I've been there, it has been a strong community. I have been to many different schools, I have five kids, I've sent four of them to kindergarten, and this is by far the best one I've ever been a part of, very loving staff. And, for instance, last Wednesday, I picked up my daughter from ice skating. I can't teach her to ice skate because I don't know how, because I'm from the south. But she had that, she was so happy to show me, hey dad, look what I just learned at school, look at the community I have, look at the friends I'm building, the relationships. And, and if I have to uproot her again from that school, after I've already uprooted her again, I just, please don't make me look her in the eye and do that.
We have Allison Mogenstein, I'm butchering that, I'm sure, and then Danielle Logan is up next.
My name is Allison Moenson, I live off Farmers Loop. Good evening, school board members. I am coming to you today as a parent of a kindergartner at Pearl Creek Elementary School. We are saddened and disappointed by the news of the possibility of a closing. Years ago, when we bought our house, before we had any children, my husband and I specifically searched for houses zoned in the Pearl Creek area because we knew Pearl Creek would be the best school for our child and a highly sought-after school with amazing staff and so many opportunities. While Pearl Creek is a physical space that houses all of the students and staff, it is so much more than the shell that the district sees it as. The community members that have attended or are attending this school view this as a place of community, a safe space, and an amazing educational institution. These views are made apparent in the school climate survey that has been put out by the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. It is very clear when comparing Pearl Creek's survey results to the other elementary schools that are, that it is the most consistently highly graded and receive the most A grades from parents of all the schools in the district, elementary schools and charter, even charter schools where parents place their kids in a lottery to attend. I know the board loves to look at the numbers, so I encourage you to look at the school climate survey, and I believe you guys got it, I don't know if you guys were able to open it, I emailed it to you earlier today. It is very clear, based on this report by the Fairbanks North Starborough School District, that Pearl Creek is a sought-after school by community members. Many fellow parents I have talked to have specifically purchased their houses in the Pearl Creek area so their kids can attend our amazing school and continue with those kids through middle school and high school. Some schools in the district's kids get separated and, but just having that continuing through, through high school. What makes Pearl Creek so special is its location, its outdoor spaces, and first and foremost are the amazing staff and principal at the school. Most staff have been at the school for fifteen-plus years and are familiar with the community and the families. Kids look forward to having the same teacher their older siblings had and look forward to having the fun experiences that their older siblings had. While budget cuts have smothered things like art specialists, band, and orchestra, the kids at our schools are still provided opportunities to make art and music in our school. Dr. Minert made a point in his email to talk about how schools are closing, are offering less and less, excuse me, how their, how schools are offering less and less. This is to no fault of the school or the staff, but is due to district budget cuts. The school is what is becoming, oh, sorry, the school is what it is because of the staff, students, and community who frequent its halls. It is a special place, and it is a highly, it is a high-quality educational setting. Please reconsider and do not shut down Pearl Creek.
Danielle Logan, and next we have Shannon Slater.
Thank you, President Hardy and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Danielle Logan, L-O-G-A-N, and I reside in Fairbanks, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Education Support Staff Association president. It is no secret how I feel about contracting out our custodial. All of our custodians play a vital part in the everyday workings of our school. Our evening custodians are there for after-school programs, building rentals, and building maintenance, light building maintenance. Our custodians also act as a safety in the evening when these events are happening. When we talk about deferred maintenance, there is a good chance then by, by contracting out, the district could potentially acquire more cost in maintenance. Our custodial are essential to the operations of this district. When we have school closures, closure days due to weather, they are the building, they are the building, they are at the buildings doing snow and ice removal. The winter break of 2021 and 2022, when we had that really bad ice, snow, and rain storm, it was our custodial grounds and FMD that showed up and got the schools opened on time. We were the only school in the state to open on time after that storm. If the district has something happen like that again, contracting out will cost more. In March of 2020, when we had to close schools, our custodials, custodians were essential and were in the buildings. There was extra cleaning required during school shutdown, and when we started school again, they had to use a static spray and spray every room. Every hour, they had to go around wiping down the door handles with disinfectant. The difference is, a custodian is responsible for the overall maintenance and care of a building or facility, including cleaning and non-cleaning tasks such as repairs and upkeep. In contrast, a janitor typically focuses more specifically on cleaning duties such as sweeping, mopping, and dusting. I know you're going to ask that question. If we don't cut custodians, where do we cut? The answer is, the question is, a false choice. The savings from outsourcing is a myth. It will cost more, it will not save. It will cost more in building and maintenance, it will cost more in making up lost work done by our custodial each day that will not be covered by the companies you would hire. It will cost more added work to existing staff making up for poor cleaning. It will hurt our schools, our community, and our students. You get, you got elected to make tough, tough, tough choices. Our financial crisis is not new, and outsourcing isn't a solution in the short of the long term. Thank you.
Next we have Shannon Slater, and after that, Allison Wilde. Shannon Slater.
She's on, sorry.
Good evening, board members, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First, I want to say thank you to, to the school board for hearing me, and I'm going to shift the, the narrative right now to something that is near and dear to me.
Say your first name and spell your last name.
My first name, yes ma'am. Shannon Slater, last name S-L-A-T-E-R. I want to extend my gratitude to the school board for providing us this opportunity for public testimony on the budget and for listening to the concerns of the parents and the community. I acknowledge the dedication and effort the school board has put into crafting the budget for the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. By having reviewed the budget and the allocations for secondary education activities, I'm compelled to address certain discrepancies that have caught my attention, particularly as a parent of children involved in activities in our district. It's concerning to observe the disparities in the funding of certain activities over others. While I understand that some activities may incur higher costs, it's important for us to not undervalue the significance of any activity within our community. Many students rely on these activities as an avenue for participation and personal development. Denying funding to certain activities limits opportunities for the students, potentially impacting their chances of earning scholarships and overall engagement in school. For instance, the exclusion of hockey from our budget is puzzling. Considering its popularity and significance in our city, additionally, the apparent discrepancies in funding levels for various activities such as ROTC, band, tennis, rifles, soccer, baseball, and cross-country skiing raise questions about the equity and fairness in the resource allocation. I've received explanations regarding how these funds are distributed, but it remains unclear why certain activities receive ongoing financial support from the school district while, while others rely solely on parent contributions. If all, all activities are indeed supposed to be parent-funded as suggested, then it's a reasonable question to ask the necessity of budgetary allocations such as those for ROTC that has three full-time associates with benefits. Cross-country skiing has trail grooming and athlete transportation. If parents were to choose to homeschool, the homeschooling option, each student would receive twenty-five hundred dollars for activities. I don't understand the math when it comes to the ninety dollars per student in the budget, and some transparency would be greatly appreciated. As a hockey parent, I can attest to the substantial financial burden associate, associated with supporting our children's participation in activities. The costs extend beyond registration fees to include expenses for equipment, travel, accommodations, coaches, and other essentials. While I don't expect the school board...
Sorry. Thank you for your testimony. After Ms. Wilde, it'll be Diane Huck.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Allison Wilde, W-Y-L-D-E, and I live in Two Rivers. I'm the principal at Two Rivers School, but I'm also a community member and a parent of a student who attends this school. I'm here in our school gym this evening with many families and community members, here to support because our school is in consideration for closure. Shout out. I don't know if you can all see us, but, but it's, but it's heartwarming to see everyone here. I'll begin by acknowledging the magnitude of our district's budget deficit and the difficult decisions you must make. There are no easy solutions, and my heart goes out to all the schools, communities, families, and individuals who may be affected. I empathize with your task. As you consider all the possibilities, I hope you will keep the rural nature of our school and its unique situation in your hearts. Two Rivers School is a central hub for our community, and in many ways functions as a separate town from Fairbanks. Without our school, I see kids traveling outside their community on exceptionally long bus rides, which is hard on little people. Many of our children are used to a small, rural, tight-knit community and may struggle in larger schools. Our families may have difficulty connecting with their new schools because of the distance they would have to drive and the financial burden incurred by traveling to school functions. I'm concerned for our staff and their families. Most of our staff live here in Two Rivers and their children attend our school. Traveling to town from Two Rivers is challenging, takes lots of planning and preparation, therefore our children don't have easy access to opportunities in town, so we create them here. On top of striving for academic excellence, we have developed a volunteer-based after-school program with various activities like Pokemon, soccer, tech club. We also provide lots of opportunities for families as a whole. We do community basketball and soccer games, we have family ski nights, and are just starting up family pickleball. Two Rivers School is more than a school for this community, it is a central hub that provides opportunities for families and community members to engage in activities that are otherwise not easily accessible. We have grandparent volunteers and community members who no longer have kids here, but come to help maintain our ice rink and support our kids. In this room this evening, we have community, families, a huge variety of people here to support us. Before I end, I do offer a few suggestions to increase the number of students we serve at the school. We could add homeschool office to service Chena Hot Springs Road families in North Pole area, we could add a pre-K option to our kindergarten classrooms. Lastly, we have several families from Weller who have joined our school community. We could open up busing options and choices for all families who live on Chena Hot Springs Road to attend Two Rivers. I hope you leave today remembering the unique rural nature of our community and the significant impact that this would have on our families. Thank you for your time.
Next we have Diane Huck, and after her will be Danette Peterson.
Hi, my name is Diane Huck, spelled H-U-C-K, and I live in Fairbanks. I've been a custodian with the school district for about fourteen years, and the first thing I want to pose is that there seems to be a difference of opinion on the difference between a custodian and a janitor. A janitor gets trash and sweeps and mops. A custodian does that and so much more. A custodian does security checks, takes care of building rentals, after-school programs, and various repairs, like fixing leaky faucets, clogged toilets, changing light bulbs, and fixing holes in walls. We do roof checks every shift when it is below twenty-five. We have a professional relationship with the building staff and are available to help during events like setup and cleanup and keeping up with spills and trash while still doing our jobs. I fail to understand how an essential part of education is continually being ravaged by the board when money is an issue. If not for the ninety-eight hard-working, loyal, dedicated custodians, we would not have the clean, safe buildings we have. We ninety-eight are real people with real lives, we have families and bills. Even after the years of cuts, we give our all every evening and still have pride in our buildings. Contracting and only having janitors will not. I shudder to think what our amazing buildings will look like in a few short years. Our kids deserve better. Thank you.
We have a question for you. Ms. Huck? All right. We actually have a question, and I wasn't able to be able to tell her that. I so appreciate the enthusiasm, but if we could keep it either silent, I, I didn't want to have to tamper people's expectations, but it's interfering with our ability to conduct a, a meeting, so please keep that in mind. Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Thank you for testifying tonight. How long have you worked for the district?
I'm in my fourteenth year.
Fourteenth year, okay, thank you, I'm sorry if I missed that earlier. And, so, can you describe what kind of extra duties you may have had during COVID, please?
Okay, we were given what's called static spray guns, and we had to, every single night, spray every single room, make sure... Make sure, you know, making sure we got the desks, the chairs. I mean, everything in the room. We had to do doorknobs every hour, every high-touch surface, like water fountains and, and that sort of thing. In addition to continuing to do our regular duties of actually cleaning the buildings. So it was, it was quite a bit.
Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
You. Next, we have Ms. Danette Peterson. And up next will be Stephen Bonifay.
Danette Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N, Farmers Loop, and boy, it's hard to follow that. My family was Pearl Creek Puffins and, um, the first thing we told our real estate agent was find something in the Pearl Creek area. But I'm not here to testify as a puffin. I'm here to speak on behalf of the 12,459 students, 1,505 staff, and the 33 buildings that are part of our school district. I'm not here to speak on behalf of a particular building and I encourage everybody who is in this room, please do not allow the politicians to divide us. We are a school community. And you may identify with your neighborhood school, but we are more than that. So please stand strong as the Fairbanks North Starborough School District first and foremost. The last two days, I've been out to the buildings that are, um, being considered foreclosure. I've heard the concerns of staff and family. I've felt their pain and I've definitely felt their anger. And anger's a good thing. We think of it as a negative, but it can absolutely be a positive. Families and staff are frustrated by the lack of state action. We've heard about red herrings bantered about suggesting there's money hidden somewhere. There's no money tree. There's no treasure chest buried in the backyard. If you can find it, please show it to us. We've also heard people talk about mismanagement of funds. Again, I ask you to come into our buildings, see, feel, and listen to what is going on for yourself. Anger happens when there is an expectation and what happens doesn't meet that expectation. It's a feeling of injustice. Those of you in this room and listening who are as frustrated as I am, please stand up for our students and make your voices heard. I asked those at the state level to keep track of how many people had during parent-teacher conferences accessed, raised the BSA. Was a good number, 87. But there's more than 87 people in this room and I know we can do better. So if you have not accessed your legislator and made your voice heard, I ask you to do so today for all of our students. Again, raise the BSA. As our budget becomes more clear, I'm gonna ask the school board to add back in those items that positively impact student learning.
Ms. Maradi.
Um, I have two questions. Um, my first one is can I have a copy of that? And my second question, um, is you were just gonna talk about add-backs and I know this is the second time I've done this, but I really, really need to hear ideas. Um, so can you finish that sentence, please, if it has to do with, um, ideas that we can consider?
Absolutely. The kindergarten teachers have told me they cannot get the school year started without their kinderpares. Decreasing the PTR. And we are a community that needs our, us as staff.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, we have Stephen Bonifay. Okay, thank you. The next list. If you could just state your name, spell your last name, and give us your residence.
My name is Stephen Bonfoy. My name is Stephen Bonfoy. Last name is spelled B-O-N-F-O-E-Y. I reside in the North Pole area. I have been with the district for 28 years, all of that spent at North Pole Elementary. And in regards to custodians versus janitorial, we do not just clean. We do carpentry. We do plumbing. We do painting, carpet cleaning, general repairs, snow removal. If a job is beyond our ability, then we send it to the district maintenance workers. But for every job that is beyond our ability to do, that we send to them, there are probably at least a dozen that we handle at the local building level that they never have to see. So if the district were to move to contract janitorial, every little repair job that we handle at that building level will be going to the carpenters and plumbers that we employ who are already overworked as it is. When we clean, we clean every sink, water fountain, every floor, bathroom, desk and table every single night. And the latter is especially important at elementary levels because the students eat in their rooms and so they are eating at their desks and tables where they sit. There are a lot of things that we do that fall outside of what you would consider standard cleaning and maintenance. Things that do not get listed in other duties as assigned, other than as series. I have helped get a building ready for summer ASP program after vandals broke in and set fire to the building and vandalized it one summer. We were able to get everything cleaned up and set up and ready to go within 48 hours, so they did not have to delay their startup for summer ASP program. I have helped catch escaped classroom pets. The current score is custodians three, snakes zero. I had to get a teacher's son out of the dumpster after she put him in there to look for her missing cellphone. Because he was not at that time big enough to get out on his own. And I helped a teacher get her printer working so she could submit her final paper because she was continuing her education. That is not something that you would ever see listed in a custodial job description. But it's something I was able to do and since I've been at that building so long and I know the people and I know the students, it's something that I can do. And I've been there long enough that I have actually seen a student that went through comeback as a teacher years later to teach at the same school where they were a student. There's a lot of things that custodians do that janitors do not, but I hope that they will not make cuts in that area, at least not more than they have to. Thank you.
We have some questions. Ms. Burnett?
Hi, thank you for your testimony today. I appreciate you being here. You know, we hear a lot about the cleaning and the maintenance and little thing, the things like that that you do. Could you tell us a little bit about the help that you give to teachers and students in their classrooms?
I work the evening shift, so that is usually outside of my area, but there is a lot of overlap with teachers who, because the teacher's day does not end when students go home. So it has been, there have been cases of switching out an entire classroom's worth of furniture because the students were not working well with the classroom setup that the teacher had. So even though the school year had already started, we completely swapped out the entire furniture set in the room and it made a night-and-day difference in how the teacher was able to teach their kids because they were just not doing well with desks. They needed tables and we got them for them. And after-school programs and evening user groups, again, there's special cleaning, special setup that is needed and we just work with them and get them whatever they need.
Ms. Maple.
Ms. Burnett kind of stole my question, but going off of that, at different work sessions, I think every single person up here at some point has identified their custodial, custodian from high school or middle school by name. And I wonder if you think if it were contracted out, if those sorts of relationships would be able to be maintained?
I don't think it is likely because I suspect that they would probably have, and I could be wrong on this, that they would probably have one team trying to do multiple schools in a night. So most of that would happen after the staff and students had already gone.
Thank you.
Mr. Doran.
You've got the hot, hot seat. And we could have also asked these, I'm sure, of, uh, Ms. Huck. Your evening shift, am I correct?
Yes.
There are night custodians that come in afterwards in your experience over the years?
We no longer have a graveyard shift custodian set up. I was a graveyard shift custodian for 14 years before I moved to swing shift. But we currently have a day custodian and then all the others are on swing.
Okay. So I might be a little bit of out of date then, going back as my days as principal. My, my question, and I'll generalize it then a little bit, is that, even custodians who may be there primarily when there are not others in the building, they're concentrated in the classroom, could you talk just from your experience over the years, what, uh, how you make a difference in those classrooms on just a regular basis for teachers?
I'm sorry, could you clarify the question?
Okay, my, my, my question and my thinking is, and I've known graveyard shifts primarily, but those who come in when there are no students around, most of the staff are gone and so they have the classroom, but what connections they make to make a difference in those classrooms for individual teachers? That makes sense?
Well, we actually arrive at the moment that students are released for our particular school, so there is interaction with students and staff. And again, as I said, people think that teachers end their day when the students go home, but we have teachers there till 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM. And there is interaction across the board and it, whether it's dealing with, uh, finding out where a student hid a carton of milk that decided to go rancid three weeks ago or special cleaning or room setup or maintenance and repair projects that they need in their room because something is broken, then we just deal with it as the situation arises.
Great, thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for.
Thank you so much for your years of dedicated service to our district and your testimony. Next, we have Charles Eddie Lindsay. Is there, uh, this is from our sign-ups in the back, so they should be in the room. Charles Eddie, and it looks like Lindsay, but it might be a C. He left? All right. Next, we have Jude Hardesty. Hardesty, sorry.
So my first name is Jude, J-U-D-E, last name Hardesty, H-A-R-D-E-S-T-Y. I moved to Fairbanks about seven years ago. And bought a house in the Yankovic Miller Hill Road area specifically because of Pearl Creek. I have a two and a four-year-old. I'm hoping they'll get to go to Pearl Creek. I hear a lot of people asking this, all these different questions and about how they love the school, but nobody's asking the questions of ways to fund it. I came here with the intention of buying 300 or 1,000 acres of state agricultural land and starting a pig farm. There's 100,000 acres out in Enana that Dunleavy approved for state agricultural land at $260 an acre, $260 an acre opening bid. It's been five years. They've sold 3,000 acres. I'll write a check for 260,000 and buy 1,000 acres. I think there's another 99 people in Alaska who'd buy the other 99,000 acres. There's $26 million. Come up with solutions. Tax the heavy haul of the dirt coming in for education. I work in the mining and petroleum industry. Tax Willow Creek. I mean, there's solutions out there. People just need to think outside the box. And as a business owner and a person who wants to employ people in the state of Alaska, if I can get a pig farm running, I gotta have the land to do it. If I can't get the land and there's no school, I can sell my house and move somewhere else. It's pretty simple. So I hope you guys come up with some budget solutions. Thank you.
What, we have some questions for you. Mr. Burgess first?
Are you aware that the school district and this board has no ability to raise our own funds or levy taxes?
But you're gonna ask the governor to give you the funds. It's a simple way of, right?
And can I ask a follow-up?
You may ask a follow-up.
Have you provided these thoughts to our state legislature or governor's office?
I literally just heard about this today at work. I have multiple coworkers who have kids going to Pearl Creek who are like, I'm going. But they have other things, work, life, that they need to do, so.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Elliot Wenzel. Is there an Elliot Wenzel, W-E-N-Z-E-L? Then we have an Oliver Rammerbacher.
All right. Hello. My name is Oliver Rammersbach, R-A-M-M-E-R-S-B-A-C-H. I live in North Pole. My daughter goes Tegase Brown. And I have no homework, so I cannot ask you numbers. Because I just, on the way to town to buy dog food, somebody said, oh, there's a meeting. You have to go there. So I wanna ask the board here, are you ready to fight and stand your ground for every school you have? Because I'm thinking there are a lot of people here willing to fight. Because if you surrender every year a school, next year another school, oh, the boiler is broken this school, we're gonna have to surrender this school to the politics, then it goes on. Then it's, this is the graveyard, actually, then. So this is the only question that I can ask you. Are you ready to call in people to fight, to stand on the streets and do something? That's my question. No more. All right. Thank you.
One second. I, I have a question if no one else does.
Yes.
Are you aware that this board and the Borough Assembly passed the first joint resolution since 1986 to ask for funding from our states and local, or actually it was this one directed at the state, to fund our schools so that we would be able to make better financial choices?
Well, see, this is the problem. I don't have much for homework. You could give me the homework and can look into it and say, all right, there is a gap. Because we live in the United States, so we always have a door to open it. And when we have enough people in the back to open it and, you know, give them a fight. Surrendering every school because of lack of funding is what we get from senators who are not doing a good job. Maybe we need more education in the mathematics and send some people to help them to make the mathematics. All right?
Thank you for that.
It's pretty simple. No one here likes to have schools gone. If you surrender your school, then you're surrendering actually your education and the education is the most important thing of a society and for the future. You know, every kid has memories with this school or this school. The one school is more good this time with this mass and, and sports and, but every school is unique and I ask you to stand your ground. I'm willing to stand on the street. I always can say I have an accent, okay? So don't take me as-
No, thank you so much and I hope you stick around and maybe you'll have some homework later.
All right.
There is a question. I'm sorry. Ms. Burnett, you've gained another question.
All right.
Sorry, I'm putting you on trial now. No, um, I just wanted to know if you were aware-
No, I just wanted to know if you were aware that four of us now have spent the last two weeks in Juneau standing our ground and fighting for a raise in our BSA and fighting for education. Four of us have been there and two more of us are getting ready to go. We are absolutely standing our ground and fighting.
Okay. Are you fighting fairly? Well, you'd never fight fairly with a politician.
Next up on deck, we have Ms. Elizabeth Nadine. Elizabeth Nadine. We can come back if she's stepped out for the moment. Oh, she may have gotten, okay. Then we have Leslie Solis Soubie. I know I probably butchered that. S-U-L-I-S dash, there we go.
Hello, everybody. My name is Leslie Solis Soubie, S-O-L-I-S hyphen S-O-S-E-B-E-E. And I moved here, or wait, Ileson Air Force Base, sorry. I moved here December of 2021. So I have seen, I have seen the effects that school closures have had on Ileson Air Force Base and the military community firsthand. I worked for Child and Youth Program Services, which is the Air Force's DoD Child Care Service. I have worked, I started off at School Age Center for elementary school kids. I then went to the Child and Youth Child Development Center, and then I was moved over to the Youth Center. So I have been all over the childcare facilities on Ileson Air Force Base. I then decided, I want to do more, I want to get more involved with my community. Let me apply to Fairbanks North Star, wait, Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. It is a mouthful. Because I care. I have no reason to be speaking here. You know, I don't have kids, I'm, you know, I'm 21 years old, I don't have kids, you know? I don't want kids at the moment because I am growing as a young person. I'm working on my undergrad for psychology because I want to be a school psychologist. I am passionate about that. I am so passionate about this community, about military families, and I just became a military wife three years ago. So, I care about this community. I care about Fairbanks, I care about North Pole, I care about the villages surrounding, I care about Alaska and this culture, this amazing culture. So, I just want to say that I've seen firsthand what school closures do. I was at School Age Center when the elementary school was closed, and we then had to transport kids. I was part of those men and women who did that. And I saw the pain, the behaviors on the military kids, the emotions that are brought up in children and youth is crazy. Like, it's, it's the reason that we as adults, you know, we still carry our pain from our childhood. I wasn't gonna speak today, but if we look in the back of the room, who is standing back there? JROTC students. I was not gonna speak tonight, and then I saw them walk in and I was like, I have to. I have to speak for them. Because I was in their shoes four years ago. I was a senior in high school, went through COVID, graduated class of 2020, woo! And I just had to speak for them. I have to speak for those kids because I love them, I care about them. You know, they're not my kids, but I care about them. And I know, I know what they suffer through being military kids and being part of military families.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Jennifer McKnight. And then after her will be Sarah Trainor.
My name is Jennifer McKnight, M-C-K-N-I-G-H-T, and I'm here for Ileson. I'm speaking as a staff member and a parent. This kills me because my kid suffers because he has an IEP. And those kids in the back are phenomenal kids. And every, I'm not saying that these other schools don't have phenomenal kids, but the military kids deserve support. This district has drowned out our school. It has taken the lifeline from the school. There's programs that these kids could have that they're not getting because the school district's like, you know what, they're this far out, they're gonna be leaving. These kids have so much to come, like, to overcome. They move, they have to make new friends, they have to adjust, and the school being as small as it is, those kids get family this way. Their parents leave on TDY, they leave on deployments. Their parents rely on the base to support them. And the misconception is that the military is supporting us. They are not. They are not funding us, they are not any of that. And these kids are losing programs, they are losing their education because of a misconception that we are getting money. And the district is snuffing out our school, not because of a budget, but it's been doing it for years. Hey, we have this program, but we're not gonna fund it. Hey, we can get this going, we're not gonna fund it. And it's absolutely absurd that these kids cannot get what they need. And their solution is, hey, you know what, we've heard your parents, we've heard the parents complain. We finally speak up, we need this for our kids. And the solution is, we've solved your problem, we're gonna close you and push you to a high school. A high school where there are so many kids that they're gonna become a number. Every one of these kids in the back, I know every single one of their names. I support every single one of these kids. And there shouldn't be any kind of closure for any of these kids, not Pearl Creek, not Ticasuk Brown, not, you know, the other, any of these schools. Last, two years ago was, hey, we're gonna solve, close these ones, solve a deficit. Guess what, we're right back in the same spot. Next year, we're gonna be in the same spot. No one has figured out what the deficit is and who's gonna overcome it. And we can keep saying to BSA, absolutely, we can all fill this out. But legislators are pointing fingers at the school district because they can't handle money. Because I've reached out to the legislators, I've reached out to the governor, I have reached out to everyone I can reach out to, and it comes back to, hey, we'll support education, but the district won't handle funds correctly. This is the answer they're coming back with. So until the district figures out how to work with the legislators to figure out, hey, you know what, we're gonna educate these kids, and we're gonna put the money back into these kids, it's never gonna work. And we're gonna keep closing these schools for nothing.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have, I think Sarah Trainor. And then after that will be Rozelle Givens.
Thank you, my name is Sarah Trainor, T-R-A-I-N-O-R. I live in Fairbanks. I want to thank you all for your service to the district and your service on the school board. I know it's a lot of work, and you're all doing the best you can. I want to thank everybody here tonight, all the parents of all the schools. I did not come with a prepared testimony because I was just gonna come and listen, and I decided if I'm gonna be here, I want to share that, my concerns, but I also have questions. I didn't prepare a statement because I've been spending time poring over your spreadsheet, your documents. There's a lot of questions that have already been raised. I'm thinking, is the six-year CIP mandated by law? There's all these huge numbers for all these schools. Do you have to do that renovation? Is it, is it really a safety issue? Is that a question? I noticed there's a million-dollar increase in administrative services in the budget. Can there be some consideration of cuts in other places besides closing schools? I know you have a very difficult job. I respect the person who came before offering solutions. I, I'm doing a lot of homework because I want to offer options and opportunities, and I wanted to speak tonight just to share my support. I'm a Pearl Creek parent, I want to, but I want to share my support for all the parents and all the students in the district. So thank you for your work.
Thank you for your testimony. So next, we have Rozelle Givens, and after that will be Jessica Conklin.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rozelle Givens, G-I-V-E-N-S. I'm a parent from Ticasuk Brown Elementary School, and I'm the lead custodian at Burnett. We are concerned about the changes being proposed to help alleviate issues facing the district. One is to replace custodial staff and others with contracted services. We feel this will raise concerns with student safety since who will vet personnel who work for the company contracted? All staff are currently vetted. Another issue being proposed is school closures based on deferred maintenance issue. A question arises about where did the money go that was intended for the maintenance? The district needs an independent audit to determine how money is spent when it is given or allocated and then used elsewhere. Another question arises on if anything needs to be closed, how about doing a cost analysis on the district office, cost versus a school? Sorry, I'm so nervous. To include salaries of district office employees and administrative staff, it has become all too common for school districts to have no accountability of money spent and to propose cutting at the bottom when the mismanagement of funds occurs at the top. We propose moving the district offices to one of the recently closed schools, cutting administrative staff at the executive levels, and an audit to determine why the funding has been mismanaged. Deferred maintenance implies money was allocated for maintenance but used elsewhere. Again, cutting staff to make up cost-endangered students is a disservice to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Jessica Conklin, followed by Ariel Cunningham.
Hi, my name's Jessica Conklin, C-O-N-K-L-I-N. I'm in Fairbanks, and I have a daughter that attends Pearl Creek Elementary and two more children coming up next year and hopes to attend Pearl Creek Elementary. We have moved here recently in the last few months from the Matsui Valley area. I spent a year hunting down a job to come to Fairbanks, and I spent that entire year also hunting down a school for my children to attend to. Pearl Creek was my number-one choice and was so glad to find housing to have my children attend there. I do have a couple questions on the cost for the maintenance. Is there a list that can be found for the maintenance deferred for those facilities that are in jeopardy of closing? And then what is the cost for these schools to remain vacant? Is there maintenance that still needs to be done to these schools on that vacant time? Are they to be taken place by another entity? Are they gonna be sold, and are those fundings gonna go to the school district to support the other facilities that will remain open? What is the studies, have there been any studies done on increased traffic for the areas where these students have to go? If those schools are closed, and where are those costs gonna come into? And are those gonna come out of the, obviously might not come out of the school budget, but would they? Also, for the schools that have students within the rural areas that are requiring transportation. I lived in a rural area of California all my life, and I was required to take two buses to my school for over five years. One of those stops was by myself to be able to get to my school. I had to be up at 5:30 in the morning to attend my school. And these areas where students are gonna have to go to these other facilities, how is that transportation going to be facilitated for them? And what's the time that our young students are gonna be on these buses? And does, that's gonna drastically cut into our time with them at a home life that our teachers are so, so willing and working hard to provide for us by cutting back homework? My other question is, is for the amount of staff that is gonna be laid off due to these closures, are these other schools, are they capable of handling that influx of staffing? And if they aren't, that means that we're losing families and great educators that have made a huge impact on our students. My daughter came from one of the top schools in the Matsui Valley and has excelled tremendously since attending Pearl Creek, and that speaks numbers for the staffing there, and I'm super happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ariel Cunningham, and then after that will be Patrick Bronson. Oh, sorry, it got signed up in two spots.
Ariel Cunningham, C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M. I'm a Ticasuk parent. I tried to get my son to come to support his school, but he was too scared to talk, but scouts honor, he wants his school to stay open. I did send you guys the letter that I wrote, so you can read that to hear all of the good things that I have to say about Ticasuk. I live within walking distance of midnight sun, and I wouldn't switch to midnight sun if I had a choice. I love Ticasuk. I understand the responsible use of public resources. My entire career for 12 years has been in public service, and yet I don't think that closing Ticasuk is the best choice. I verified this with the teachers. They don't think it's the best choice to close the school, it's not best for the kids. When I walk around the school and I see the empty classrooms, I don't think, oh, we should close the school. I think, oh, we need to hire more teachers to decrease our class size. And so, four years ago, when my son started at Ticasuk, I told myself, I need to get involved in the school board so that I can advocate for the budget and make sure that it's big enough. And I regret not prioritizing that. So here I am at the 11th hour, hoping for a Hail Mary. If you're, if you're not familiar with the Perry School, Perry Preschool Project, just take five minutes to Google it, I think that kind of says everything that I believe about the importance of investing in our education. If we want to save money as a community in the long run, further down the road, minimizing crime, minimizing mental and medical healthcare needs, then we need to be beginning with investing in our schools and our children and our education. So, I did send my letter to all the legislators, the governor. I've learned a lot in the last hour listening to everybody talk, and it sounds like I'm here to work with you guys to advocate for the budget, and so I'm looking forward to hearing what else I can do to make sure that funding for our school district is sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. So that concludes the end of our pre-signed-up testimony. I do have some requests from board members that we take a five-minute recess, and then we will resume. And anyone in the room that would still like to come up, you will have an opportunity to come up, first come, first served to the chair. So, at this point, five-minute recess, we will return around 7:52? So at this point, five-minute recess, we will return around 7:52?
Now it probably would be conventional, but you know, when he first approached it wasn't.
Especially like at this time. But you know, it's a labor of love.
They finally got to the center of the house and it was a trailer. It was like a three-story house that was built around a trailer. And it was like, okay, yup, only in Fairbanks, only in Fairbanks could you build a three-story house around a trailer.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
If I could get board members to come back to the dais? Mr. Hensel, if you're waiting to testify, you can take a seat and we are going to come back from a recess now. If people don't feel like waiting in line, we're not cutting this off. So you are welcome, but if you would rather do that, that is also perfectly fine. But everyone is going to get a chance to talk tonight. If you would please state your first name, spell your last name and your area of residence.
Jessie Hensel, H-E-N-S-E-L, and I live in the Pearl Creek area. I just wanted to take a moment to tell a story about my classroom just to illustrate the community connections that so many of our classes and schools have. Since 2015, my class has met monthly with the Fairbanks Native Association elders. We have lunches together once a month and do hands-on activities. And that started by us taking a walk in the woods together, elders and first graders, to pick berries below Pearl Creek Elementary. And that grew with invitations back and forth over the years organically. And I know that that is not the only example of a program that grows out of a classroom, out of a school, and adds to our community as a whole. And I will do my best to maintain those connections no matter where I am as a teacher, and I know we all will. Just like no matter where the students land, the emphasis will still be on care and learning. And but when the boundaries are redrawn, then people are relocated and some of those connections become harder to maintain. And then also there are in-kind financial relationships. So those aren't just partnerships in terms of people. But the Fairbanks Native Association is supporting our students financially through that program. And there are ways in which UAF and its connections to our school also bolster the funds to our school in ways that are not shown in that budget. And I know, again, that that is not unique for our school. But those connections and financial and community-wise extend beyond the classroom in a network that may be harder to see in that document. And I know you're aware of that because several of you have had students in my class. But I just wanted to put it out there for that community at large. So thank you.
I have one question. Oh, wait, well, Ms. Maple first. Sorry. Maybe you go first. Mine is bragging through a question. Mr. Hensel, is it true that that program won an award and yourself from the governor very recently?
Yeah. Not long ago, yes, I won, I was awarded by the Alaska Humanities Forum an education award for that program as well as there are folks around the state and nationally doing their best to emulate that for their schools.
Ms. Maple, are you ready?
Mine's also a little bit of a question in disguise. Were you aware that because of the relationships that you helped grow, that when the pandemic closed all of our schools, my daughter's first question was, well, how do I stay in touch with my elder buddy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come up and just state your first name, spell your last name, and give general area of residence.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Manning, M-A-N-N-I-N-G. I live in Salta, Alaska, and I'm a junior at Ben Ileson High School. I've been going to Ben Ileson since I was in seventh grade. And all throughout my time there, I have been doing student council. And when I got to high school, I began in JRTC. And in both of those extracurriculars, I've built myself a position of leadership, being the president of each class throughout my high school career, as well as being a squadron commander for JRTC and a first sergeant last year. And my problem, not problem, but one thing I'm concerned about with the shutting, if this school were to be closed, is that I would not have the same opportunities and community in the new school. And that there were, lose my words, sorry. There's a lot of community, obviously, but I, as a military kid, I have moved around a lot. I've been to a lot of schools and I've not seen the same community in these other schools that Ben Ileson has. And I believe that is unique. And I would just like to see that continue as well as see it thrive because I think we have a lot of incoming opportunity for improvement in our school. That's it.
Thank you. We have a question. Mr. Doran.
You've done a really good job. Oh, okay, sorry. Are you aware that you are doing a really good job?
I was not, but thank you.
My question is, and not to put you on the hot seat, but just to get a student perspective. One of the concerns, and I've been able to see it as I've visited Ileson over the years, it has gotten a little bit smaller, some of the options for students have gotten fewer. But you've been around, you know the military community, you know it as a student within that. What could we do to make that student experience better for you?
There's I think as a school, if we had maybe a little more funding, because I think there are a lot of things that we could improve on with, maybe, you know, our dirt track. That would be nice to have like a real track. And just the same opportunities as the other school because I feel like we are overlooked. Like one of the people who spoke earlier said that we are overlooked because maybe we get funding from the military. However, we do not. So just things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Whoever's next, just take the seat, the same thing.
Excuse me. I do have a hand up on Zoom, so.
Yes, sorry, we forgot, our Colonel is on Zoom.
Not the Colonel, but there is a participant with their hand up that wants to testify.
Oh, that wants to testify? We usually don't
Oh, okay.
take testimony off of Zoom unless that's something. Okay, sorry, it wasn't Pumba.
But I'm here.
Thanks.
All right, my name's Zoe Fuller, F-U-L-L-E-R, and I live in Salta. I'm a third-generation student at Ben Ileson. And I was going to be third generation to graduate there, but we'll see how that goes. I'm a junior, so basically the school shutting down means a lot for me. I've had my senior year planned out. I knew what classes I was going to do, what sports I was going to play. And I was excited to graduate with all of my friends. It might not look like that next year if our school gets shut down. I know some kids will go homeschool, some will go to North Star, and some will go to North Pole. And for me, I live in Salta, like North Star's an hour drive for me. I don't really want to go to North Pole, I'm not even going to lie. And I've done homeschooling, I don't want to go back. I want to graduate at my school. As I've gone to Ileson, it's just become a family. It is small, and I know some people complain about that, but I love it. Like I went from homeschooling to a small school and that was perfect for me. It's like 150 kids in the high school. And each of them are like, I know, I could tell you every one of those kids' names. They're my friends, they're my family. I know each of them, one of the staff. I could go to them with any problem I have. And I've really appreciated this school in high school. It's meant a lot to me and I think I've grown a lot as a person. And I'm very involved as well. Like I do student council, I do JRTC, I've done wrestling, softball. I did HOSA. Like I've been at this school and I've seen it firsthand. And it's a school that I love. And I just wanted to come here and represent the rest of my fellow students that we don't want this school to shut down, that this is our school. And I have all these kids here backing me up, like this is our school. And we love it and I don't want it to shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions, but thank you.
Hello, my name is Casey McGoffin, M-C-G-O-F-F-I-N. I live on Ileson Air Force Base. I came here to represent all of those who are unable to come here, especially parents of those that go to Ileson. Many either are still at work or are deployed or on TDY, such as my dad, he is DDI right now. And I also want to express the gratitude that I have towards the staff at Ileson. Especially because we have a smaller population, we really get to know our staff and they give us that support that we might not have while our parents are gone. And if you look at our senior class especially, we have a lot of accomplishments. Myself and two others behind me have gone, were sent to flight school because of that support and we have our PPLs. Six of us have been accepted into Embry-Riddle and many other colleges. We have a little board in our JRTC classroom with all that stuff. And it is filled with schools that we've been accepted to and scholarships that we have. Also, Ileson is, to my knowledge, one of the few schools that provides an internship program to a bunch of military jobs and jobs in North Pole and Fairbanks that gives us the chance to explore stuff that we are interested in. And we can learn more about that before we've been done with high school with no experience in that field. And I am doing that internship. I did it for maintenance, or spring semester last year, and I'm doing ATC right now in this spring. And it's taught me so much about military. And I think that program has really strengthened the connection between this community of Salta and Ileson to the military. And I even know kids that live in the far reaches of Fairbanks that choose Ileson because of the community that we have at this school. So I would really be saddened, even though I am a senior at this school, really be saddened to see that the school that I graduated from is no longer a school. Thank you.
Guys are doing great. Is there anyone else? Thank you so much.
Hi, Ashley Fitzgerald. My name is Ashley Fitzgerald, F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D. Good evening, and thank you for having me. I have two children enrolled in Ben Ileson Junior Senior High School. They started there last year after having been homeschooled. My daughter's the freshman class president, performed as the armed drill team commander for JRTC, and has a staff position with JRTC. She's very involved in her school and is developing her resume for her higher education goals. She's worked hard to develop her relationship with her peers and teachers to fill her role as class president and her staff positions and with JRTC. Transitioning to North Pole High School represents an obstacle to her resume development, as so much of her success has been dependent upon her hard work in establishing herself and her social group. This hard work will have to start over for her at North Pole High School in her sophomore year, with only three years left until graduation. Every single year of her high school career makes a huge difference in achieving her specific higher education goals. This setback will affect the rest of her life, as it will the rest of the students at Ben Ileson Junior Senior High School. My son, as a middle schooler, is in a critical stage of identity development. Identity development is highly dependent on one social group. Inserting students into a social group of peers that they have been competing with for years presents unfortunate risks to their development. Yes, military kids are resilient. I would know, I was one, and I'm raising three. It's unfair to ask military's children, who have had to exhibit admirable resiliency up to this point, to leave the community full of resources for their success and their family's success, and enter a brand-new community and push their resiliency skills to the limit yet again. Bottom line, military families suffer the most with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Christina Clemente, C-L-E-M-E-N-T-E. I come to you as representative on pretty much every level that's been said so far. I'm a military brat myself. I'm prior service. My husband's retired military, so I've been involved with the military my entire life. I have six children that have gone through the school district here, or still going through. And I'm a teacher at Ticasuk Brown. And I'm invested in this community. We retired here, and we retired here because we, we love this community. And the people I work with are, are my family. My children, when my husband was active duty and working nonstop hours, and Shawna Henderson was my principal at, at Ticasuk Brown, we had our family dinner around the staff lounge table four nights a week, four nights a week. And we invited the custodians, and we invited anybody that was left in the building, because we couldn't afford to go back to post and then go out to sports. So, six children and myself and any other employees still in the building came and sat at dinner with us four nights a week. I'm talking the works, like a mother of six children can do. And it, there was a relationship there. And Ms. Marmee, our janitor or our custodian, is amazing, and she's a MacGyver and a magician, and I don't know how she keeps this building together with shoestring and bubble gum, but she does it. And we're still, we're still functioning. They haven't had to close this down yet because of all the bad repairs that aren't getting done, because she's doing everything she can to make it happen. And on another level, my oldest went to, I think we just were counting, 12 different schools because of our constant moving. And she ended at North Pole High, and she loved it. And luckily, my youngest two have had the stability, because when we retired here, we were no longer moving schools. And they went through TIC from kindergarten to fifth grade. And it, the stability in the family they feel is, is enormous, the connection to their community. We see their friends and their teachers in public, and they know them by name, and the teachers know them. And they, they're setting up things in the building before school, because their mom's a teacher, and that's the junky life they get. But they're, they're invested. And it feels unfair to keep telling teachers and families to build a relationship and a community in their school. And I tell my students in first grade right now, I love you guys. I am your school family. I'm here to help you. And I, I hug them and tell them how much I love them, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart, even the naughty ones. I tell them. And then I'm gonna say, psych, I don't know if I'll see you again. Your school's closing because the people above me didn't care enough to keep it open. The people above me didn't care enough to manage money properly. I've been at TIC through four principals. We've got an amazing principal right now, and we're, we're really on an upward swing of making things happen, where we work cohesively. And I've got thousands of dollars invested in my classroom, and I'm, I'm just gonna go pour all my garage? That's it? This is the end? That's not fair. This is my family. It's not just my family. They are my family. I'm not gonna see them every day? That is unfair. I went to the middle school to enroll my daughter, and there was a line of students waiting to see me, former students. Not anymore if you close TIC.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Nicole Moore, and I am a shift custodian at Tanana School. And being a shift custodian, that means, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't spell my name. M-O-O-R-E is my last name. Being a shift custodian means that I work from Wednesday through Sunday, so I'm working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 11, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, I am there opening the buildings for the user groups that happen. Sports teams are there every single weekend, starting at 11:30 and going to 6:30, and then I'm doing little odd jobs all throughout the building while they're having their sports time. And then, when they are done, I am cleaning up the gyms, the bathrooms, and everywhere that they have been working and doing things in the building. Previously, so Fairbanks is my hometown. I spent considerable time in the Bay Area of California, and that is where I started my custodial career. So I might give a few correlations there with how our governor is doing versus California's governor. So I'm not really happy with the proposed closure or the proposed outsourcing of custodial staff. And one thing that I haven't heard brought up is the income parities with that happening. There's a lot of, I mean, we're the bottom of the barrel here. We make the lowest incomes of the whole school district. And thanks to some, our union advocating for us, we were able to get some income increases, but, and that took us, some of us above the poverty levels where we didn't have to rely on social services. But if you lay off 100 or more employees, that's gonna throw 100 people back on social services. And then the employees that will be hired by these other outsourcing groups, I have some printouts of some of the obvious choices that might put in bids for that, they are going to be right around the poverty level. And it's my understanding, they're also going to be 10-month employees, which is gonna throw them into a lower income level, which means all of these employees are going to be working poor, who are going to have to rely on social services, food stamps, food service programs, housing, subsidized heat, electric, all of that. And where does that fall within the community? That's, you know, doesn't come from the school district, but that does fall on all the taxpayers and the rest of the community in the borough. So, on that level, I think maybe Governor Donald Levy funding the schools is doing a much lesser job than Governor Newsom in California.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Come up. Thank you.
Ron Metzner, M-E-T-Z-N-E-R, 5001 Haystack Drive. I teach science at Lathrop High School. Originally, I came because of the situation with the janitors. Basically, loyalty is important. They, they basically, they become part of the building, it becomes their building. And they helped me out incredibly. If I need something, for instance, today, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be doing ellipses, because we're doing planets right now. And I needed some cardboard, and they, one of the guys showed up with a big box full of all kinds of cardboard boxes, so I don't have to go buy it, which is really nice. Also improves my productivity, because I don't have to run around and do things. So, they're great. And there, there's a lot to be said for loyalty and being part of the program. I mean, I mean, it's a stupid comparison, but contracting out was what killed us in Afghanistan. All of those parts for all of the military equipment that the Afghan army was trying to use was contracted out. And when things went down the tubes, the contractors just took off, and there was nobody to fix the parts, so. Which, not quite that bad, but it, you, I, I wanna get the analogy out there. Now, the other thing has to do with schools closures. Basically, it's been my experience, I've been teaching for a while, that for every 10 kids you add to my class, the class average goes down one letter grade. And so, apparently, we're gonna go up to 35 technically, but when the count is done on the number of kids per classroom, that counts the, that counts the administrators, and that counts the counselors in the building, and it counts special ed. Anyway, it turns out the actual size is not gonna be 35, it's probably gonna be 40 or more. And so, I need all the janitor's help I can get. And if you close schools, that just makes it, you know, we're, we're hurting all the kids, is basically what's happening. So that, that's my, that's it.
We do have a question for you. Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. You know, out there, just being in the public, you know, looking on Facebook, you see a lot of people talking, you see a lot of things out there. And we keep hearing that we put a lot on teachers' plates. We ask a lot of them. My question for this was, if we contract out custodials, I hear a lot of things, like the janitor went and got, found you your cardboard boxes, right? That's actually a huge deal. I've tried to look for cardboard boxes myself.
Yeah, right.
Huge deal.
It helps.
And they're expensive. If we contracted out the custodial, would this add even more to the teachers' plates?
Well, I think so. I mean, because we, we don't have the help from, and if they're, if they're having to do multiple schools, and they're just barely as, as few as you, because the, the owners of the operation are gonna wanna, you know, the bottom line is to make the most profit they can and pay their, their folks, and do as much with as few people as possible, which means they're, they're gonna be fried, they're not gonna be able to help us. There's, it, I just don't see the same situation as what we got now. They won't be invested in the school, because they maybe have to do three or four different schools. It's, so, I, anyway, it's, you know, think about it.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you. Talking about the custodial support, and I'm not sure if the custodian who got to the cardboard was somebody there during the day or later.
He was one, he was a regular day custodian.
Okay. So, could you, as a teacher, talk to us a little bit about what custodians who may not be there when you are there, but that support your classroom?
Well, the, you know, the, for instance, if, if, I live at Lathrop. I'm there till midnight. So, I ran into all of them, and they all helped me.
Okay.
So.
Great.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's April Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I live in North Pole. Came here with this long rant that I wanted to read, which I probably still will. But before I do that, I wanted to say that I heard someone say that they've been here all night and learned so many things. And I wanna say that is so dangerous, because I have filled this entire sheet of paper with things that were not true, that people said to this board. Usually, I'm here gladly to hassle the board, but so many of the things that were said by people in testimony tonight could have been clearly answered if you had taken the time to listen to the meeting from last night, where 99% of these questions and facts that people threw out that were just plain wrong were totally addressed and answered. So, thanks for having that meeting. Thank you for answering a lot of those questions. Anyway, last Thursday, the board representative at the borough assembly meeting was an embarrassment to the district. This person served only to increase public ire toward the board and the district, and failed to put the concerns of the public to rest, and engaged in aggressive questioning of members of the public. It was a bad look for the Board of Education, who is trying to help the public gain understanding and support for the district's position on funding. The overly emotional and dramatized testimony just made people angry, and feel like the district was using manipulation instead of facts and information to support their position. This behavior was disappointing, but worse still were the dozens of calls and emails and texts that I received, reporting that a member of this board organized a virtual attack on legislators on Saturday. It was an embarrassment to the district that a prominent board member was, again, part of name-calling and chaos, and did not work toward lobbying for education funding. It is an embarrassment to those who do work hard to lobby the, those difficult votes in a professional, adult, and respectable manner. The behavior of people at the town hall, led by people on this board, only served, in my opinion, to harden some of those legislators against funding even more. It's a disturbing trend where board members continually make the work that we're all trying to do to improve education funding and support exponentially harder. I got more to say about that, but you get the point. Additionally, I was pleased to see the release of the schools in consideration for closure. I intend to write a long community perspective in support of the board work in that way, because conservatives and conservative legislators often call for the reduction of waste, and that is a reduction of waste.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello. My name is See Lali True, T-R-U-E, and I'm here to show my support for my Ticasuk Brown family. I'm a mother of two who currently attend Ticasuk Brown. My younger daughter has my older daughter's teacher, and the plan for next year was to have her move up into her current teacher as well, Ms. Rush. Like all parents, I worry. I worry about their future and their education. Since attending Ticasuk Brown, I haven't had to worry. I know that they are in good hands, and I know that their education is coming from caring teachers. Myself, growing up as a military child and having to change schools various times, most of the schools were overcrowded and taught by teachers that seemed to have a lot on their plate. And as unfair, as it was to us, it was very unfair to them. I beg you to find the funding for our children, for their children. I beg that you don't let my children become students who are overlooked. I grew up going to school not knowing that I had a learning disability, and I always wonder that if I had that one-on-one with my teacher, like my daughter does, if maybe my education would have been different. But I, I just beg that you take it into consideration that this is very, it's very hurtful. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Manning, M-A-N-N-I-N-G. You've met my daughter Caitlin. She actually came up for moral support, because she knows that this has been a very emotional week for me. I am both an educator and a parent of Ben Ileson students. She is my third, and she is a junior. And my, the injustice that is happening to the junior class at Ben Ileson is what has brought me to this chair. I wrote my thoughts down, because I really wanna make it clear what I, what I do have to say, and try to keep my emotions in check. But I will start by prefacing this with saying that I'm a 25-year in check. But I will start by prefacing this with saying that I'm a 25-year military veteran. I spent several years of my career working budgets at a major, major command level. I understand funding and I understand cuts, and I know that the fat has to be trimmed. That doesn't mean that the peanut butter spread that looks great on paper at a Magcom level, or at a school board level, or at a government for the state level, is the right answer. So, with that, I would like to read my thoughts with you. I'm a parent and educator at Ben Ileson. I'm here because I have grave concerns for the high school students who attend Ben Ileson High School. More specifically, my heart breaks for the junior class. At this wonderful school, there are several juniors who have spent their last three years of their high school career preparing for what is to come next year. Five days after news of closure recommendation, we are aware that the timeline provided means that these students have only a few months to figure out how to salvage their senior year, the year of their graduation, and culmination of what they have worked hard for throughout high school thus far. For example, my daughter and some of her classmates in the junior class are in leadership roles in Ben Ileson Student Council. I'd like to think we would agree that student government is a vital part of student education, preparing them for leadership roles, helping them pursue scholarships and other future opportunities. This is my daughter's fifth year on student council. This is her third year in high school on student council, where she has served as the president for each grade. She is a product of several military moves, having to start over and be the new kid several times over the years. She found a safe, healthy, and supportive culture at Ben Ileson. It is still that culture. Last year, she served as the 10th grade student body president. This year, she serves as the junior class president. For her senior year, she has planned to pursue the same role as a senior class president and represent her classmates. In addition, she is in her third year in junior ROTC, where she has served increasing leadership positions each year. She has been prepping to serve in the top leadership roles in, in the corps in her senior year. These two opportunities, student council and her roles in junior ROTC as a leader, are being robbed of her and her classmates, as they will have to start as the new kids at another school for their senior year.
I'm sorry. Are there any questions?
May I finish my question?
Just one more.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You get the gist. You guys are robbing our kids of their senior year. Their timeline could be adjusted so that this is not so brutal. My daughter will not have the same opportunities going to, say, North Pole next year because she is at the bottom of the food bowl. Why the short timeline? This has created a loss of trust and confidence in this school board and its concern for our students' success and excellence in equality.
That really is time.
Excellence, excellence in equality in their education is not happening. I love my students.
Hi. My name is Kelsey Rissmiller, last name R-I-S-S, M-I-L-L-E-R. I don't have a statement prepared because I came in here for solidarity, solidarity for the teachers at Pearl Creek, and my kids go there. I'm a mom of five. All of my kids were expected to go there. Three of them, actually, four of them go there, one's in pre-K, which has actually expanded her education because she was behind. My son, my oldest son, he's in fifth grade. He'll be in middle school, so this doesn't really affect him too much. The teachers there have worked so hard to give him the chance to not fall through the cracks. The why, why I bring that up is because the ratios between students and teachers, who are already overworked and underpaid, kids are going to fall through the cracks, and it is at no fault to them. I think closing any school is obviously very awful. I am a lifelong resident of Fairbanks. I went to multiple of the elementary schools, and I graduated from here. I really do hope that you guys think about the process of closing any of the schools, but what detrimental that will do to all of the students, not just my specific school that it affects. Again, I don't really, I'm just here in solidarity, and I just want you guys to understand that the ratio is going to be awful. And as someone who serves as a job in the community, that changing schools is going to affect more than just my kids' routine, it's going to affect everything in our life. And that's it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi. My name is Bonnie Mund, M-U-N-D. I reside in Fairbanks and currently work at Pearl Creek Elementary School. I also have my two sons who attend Pearl Creek. I wanted to speak as somebody who homeschooled the entire way growing up. And I knew from the time that I started thinking about having kids moving on, that I would not homeschool my own kids. And that's because I'm not the mom and the community builder that, that she is. She built me a community when I grew up homeschooling. But that takes a special strength and dedication as a parent, and it's not something that many parents have the resources, the education, or just the, the personality and the willingness to do. Joining a neighborhood school is the first time that I have spent any real time inside a public school. And I have been constantly amazed and full-hearted by the community and the team and the safety that is provided there. I know that my sons are not dependent on me and my family members alone, to see what they need and to be their only safe places and safe people. They have that in their teachers. They have that in their classmates. They have that in their school counselor and their school nurse. They have that in our resource teachers. They have that in their PE teacher and their music teacher. And that team of adults interacting with my children on a regular basis gives me the confidence that my children are growing up safe, whole, and supported, and that they know that. And while that is something that I was extremely lucky to grow up with as a homeschool student, I cannot overstate the essential nature of our neighborhood schools in providing those building blocks and support structure for students of every background, from every family. I know that there are extremely difficult decisions to be made, and I am so grateful to all of you for being here and being the faces of decisions that were not your doing. You started higher. So, thank you very much for being here and for taking the time to listen to all of us.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi. My name is Chris Villano, V-I-L-L-A-N-O. I thought I was coming, and I'm from Fairbanks, coming tonight just to see my old principal. And there he is. And then I said, should I get up to talk? Maybe not. Then I saw Sue over there, and she's my guru on public education. So, I said, maybe I should. I'm wearing blue, Tim, same color as Denali. This is a Denali shirt, Tim, that I put on inside out so that I could take over being a puffin grandma. I worked in the school district, Luke, for 40 years, counting as a PTA leader. I was the president of Brandy's School. My husband taught Brandy. We've taught a lot of principals and, and teachers in the district. But one thing that really I'm proud of you part of the district, and I know that you're trying hard, but it is heart-wrenching to see that when we come to a budget, we have to close schools. And schools are, neighborhood schools, base schools, are the foundation of our society and culture. I think about the, remember when we were worried that Ileson would be closed down? The community rallied. If they don't have their own school and, and provide a good quality of life for the families, nobody's going to want to serve at Ileson. And maybe it will be, you know, the base will be closed down. Tookusak Brown, I love Amy Bell. Man, I don't want to make her sad, but Tookusak Brown is another example. Those teachers and families and support staff have built a community. And at Pearl Creek, I am a bona fide grandma volunteer. Luke, you're getting a master teacher for the price of cipher. I, I work with the university doing science lessons for IARC. They fund me to go into the classrooms. Pearl Creek is one of the nicest schools, not as nice as Denali, believe me, Tim. No, I'm kidding. They're, they're fantastic. And I, I just can't believe that we're thinking about closing Two Rivers, too. See, Allison, I am, I do have your back. It just seems like we're destroying Fairbanks, and we want to know why students are leaving? Well, nobody wants to live here anymore, because we're not going to have the kind of schools that we used to have when my kids and Brandy was little and going to Joy School, which is now closed. I want to thank you for your time, and next time I come, I'll have a better-prepared speech. But Luke, I just want you to know that sometimes retired teachers can be very funny.
Thank you for your testimony.
And smart.
You do have one question, Ms. Villano. Ms. Maple?
Would you be surprised to hear that last week, when Ms. Marotti and I were in Senator Click Bishop's office advocating for funding, that he brought up the Ileson pushback that you mentioned, and said, that's what we need to see right now in Fairbanks to get education funding?
I love Click Bishop, but it's just, you know, platonically.
Hi. I'm Olivia Clemente, C-L-E-M-E-N-T-E. A former student of Tikusak Brown, and my mom currently works there, along with a bunch of other people I know, like Mrs. Bell, mentioned in the last one. And there are so many great memories with that school. The teachers are just amazing. A lot of people love it there. And it'd be a shame if the school closed, because everybody who knows about it loves it. And all my friends that I got at TIC, they were all just amazing people. And I'm sad that they're not going to my school, because my school's amazing, too. But not, not nearly as good as TIC. A bunch of different teachers were so helpful to me while I was there with learning and, yeah, what, yeah.
We have some questions for you. If you could just wait just one minute, Ms. Burnett?
Did you know that we are so proud of students like you, Ms. Clemente? You are amazing, and every student tonight was amazing. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Joe Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-Z. I live on Ileson Air Force Base. First off, thank you very much for the opportunity to give all of us, you know, a chance to speak and be heard. And didn't have anything prepared, didn't really come ready to speak, so it won't be quite as eloquent as some of the predecessors here. But it's our job as adults to prepare and protect our children in every way that, that we can foresee in their future. It saddens me that I've brought my, my children to a state that doesn't value education the way that they should. You know, everybody from, from my level as a parent, I haven't been involved, but our, our elected officials, our school board, everybody, we just need to do a better job. Closing schools shouldn't be the answer to solving a budget issue. And then going on to protecting our children. Most of our children out at Ileson are from military families. We try to protect them in ways of, you know, resilience. It's been brought up that, that we have resilient children. I don't like to see my kids tested and pushed further when it comes to their resilience. They are, right now, at Ileson, so long the school they've ever been to, a long sign they've ever been at one school. They're both juniors, sort of. My son's been working very hard to skip a grade so that he wouldn't have to go to another school. I hit 20 years of service this summer. I could retire. I didn't. I extended, so my kids wouldn't have to change to another school. I, I'm just saddened that the failures of us as adults, as the protectors and preparers of our children, that we've let the weight of our failures fall on their shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello. My name is Leila Brehmer. It's B-R-E-H-M-E-R. I reside in North Pole. I'm here as a third-grade teacher, but also as a community member, a former parent of this school district. My daughter now resides in Juneau. She was third in her class in North Pole last year. Many of you have met her. She represents Fairbanks, North Star Borough with pride. She's writing to the legislature and the governor as we speak. She's recruiting former students. The image of our school district means a lot to our family, my Tikusak family, my Fairbanks family, my best friend in Pearl Creek. We have served the school district for 23 years. I am a spring chicken. I am not old, I keep telling myself. I love my children, every single one of them, year after year. I was deprived of many things as a young lady. And it was my mission to not have one person ever feel like they're a waste and not worthy. The only thing that pushed me through were my teachers. A public school means a lot to so many, and our image is important. We have pride, and so should you. Our children come first. This district needs to do something to put our children first. Thank you.
All right. I'm not used to using microphones. I'm a PE teacher, and I'm pretty loud, so when I get a mic in front of me, it gets ugly. I just want to talk about community a little bit.
Could I get you?
Oh, sorry. Nick Herzberg, H-E-R-Z-B-E-R-G. I live in Fairbanks. Born and raised in Fairbanks, Wood River Wolf Pub, Ryan Wolverine, and West Valley Wolf Pack. Okay. I went off to school and I came back here because, because of the community that I grew up in, and all of the memories I had, and I wanted to be able to give that to my future family. I, I get to go around in Fairbanks, and you see all, I see so many people that I grew up with in the community, or, or family of people that I went to school with and things like that. These are the people that are staying here and giving back to this community to help keep it going and keep us thriving. And they grew up in this wonderful community, and they want to pass that on to their families, just like I did. I'm really grateful for the
I'm really grateful for being at Ticasuk Brown and where I'm at and the community that I've also been able to build there. And so I'll tell a little story about kind of the community here. So on May 31st this year, my son will be two years old. And I coached the West Valley High School Boys Soccer Team as well. So we were going downstate in 2022, right at the end of the year there, right after school ended. And I got a call and my wife was going into the hospital with complications, okay, three months early. And so Wayne Sawchuck, one of my former teachers, and he was the AD over there, and a family friend and many things. I dropped my kids off, and I said, "You go get them. You know, I got to go take care of mine," you know. And Sawchuck came and picked me up and took me back to, or took me to the airport. They got me a ticket, and they got me home so I could be with my family, okay? And then we quickly got medevac down to Anchorage as my wife had Help Syndrome. And we had to deliver a two-pound son, right, it was two pounds. Without the community that I have at my school and the community that I've built here in Fairbanks, being born and raised here, my son might not be as well-off as he is now. And he's firing on all cylinders. He's as crazy and loud as me and energetic and all of those wonderful things. But we were able to, I was able to be there with my wife in Anchorage. And I was able to, I had people who were buying me tickets each weekend to go back and forth because I have a family business in town that I come and run during the summers. I run one of the paint crews. And so I came back, and I'm working four tens or five tens and then flying down for Saturday, Sunday with the help of so many people in this community that have helped me. And so those are the things that I think about with this. And that's what I think that we're going to, you know, I'm one of thousands and thousands of stories, right, that are just like that. And that's what I think we're losing out on here when we close schools and we alienate our, you know, our community. And I guess one of my questions is, you know, how do we turn this around? Where is the U-turn? That starts putting us in the right direction because what I, the way things are going, I feel like we're going to have less and less qualified teachers that want to be here and are in it for the kids and that are going to get into it. And so as the education continues to suffer for these children, each and every year, we're going in the other direction. I just wonder where we turn it around and keep those kids back in the community like I came back. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hey. Okay. My name is Amber Pringle, P-R-I-N-G-L-E. I am the Student Behavior Support Technician out at Pearl Creek Elementary. I had no intention of talking today, but my teenager is with me, and it's time to lead by example. I just sat through a half-day training where they embedded into our brains, students cannot learn until they feel safe. Pearl Creek is a safe space. We are safe people. And I can say, as a former Puffin, that that has been the case for a very, very long time. If you were to close Pearl Creek, you would be displacing children who have already been displaced. Who knows if they're ever going to feel safe again after that? Who knows if they can ever feel like they can trust another person after that? They seek out safe people, safe places. That is what Pearl Creek is. We are a family, and we are supporting families. So we cannot afford to be closed down because we are more than a building. About all I can get to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Hello, I am Shelley McGoffin, M-C-G-O-F-F-I-N. You heard from my son Casey earlier. I just have a couple of food for thought. First off, we've lived here twice. We were here when my kids went to Crawford. We chose to come back so that we could go to Ben Ileson. We chose to live on base specifically so that our children could go to Ben Ileson. The opportunities that my kids have had at Ben Ileson have been amazing. Both of my 17-year-olds now are private pilots because of the JRTC program that they offered and the support that they've gotten from Mr. Bell and Ms. Wendy and Ms. Tanya and Sergeant Manning. It's a very close-knit community, and they do everything in their power to support those kids and to make them or help them succeed in what they want to succeed. So just food for thoughts for all of the schools that you're thinking about closing. What will Fairbanks as a whole do when military members no longer want to come up here because of the education? Like I said, I chose to come back up here because my kids got to go to Ben Ileson. And we knew it was a safe environment to have our teenage boys in. Families already have to secure housing before they can come up here. And now we're adding the thought that their kids might have huge classes and not get the education that they need. Have you taken into consideration that our students at Ben Ileson have younger siblings? They have younger siblings that they then walk over to Crawford and they get and they take care of when their parents are deployed TDY, where, you know, the spouse is working just to make ends meet because Alaska's expensive. And then you're throwing childcare on top of that. I don't know if you know that the childcare on base is pretty much non-existent, but school-age care on base is a year-long wait, from what I hear. I don't have school-age kids, but there's nowhere for those children to go after school. So then what happens? Can the spouse not work? That spouse is probably, you know, working to fill some other vital role in the community, whether it be a teacher, a bus driver, a custodian, a nurse, a doctor, a PA. You know, we don't, a lot of these spouses, they need support, too. I know that when my husband was deployed, one of the nicest things that my children had was someone that understood them. He deployed when my son was in fourth grade. My fourth grader tried to get expelled from school, no joke. And had he been at a school that doesn't understand what military kids go through, they probably would have just labeled him a horrible child, and he would have been pushed aside. But he graduated from Ben Ileson last year. So just take into consideration what it's going to do to the whole community, and not just Ben Ileson, it's going to be North Pole, too.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Move to extend to 10 o'clock.
Second. Is there anyone else wishing to testify tonight?
My name's Becky Hammer, H-A-M-M-E-R. I live in Fairbanks. I'm wearing my Puffin shirt, but I started out as a weller whale. And I just, it's been so interesting to listen to everybody tonight because I meant to speak earlier, and then I thought, "Well, they've already said that." And I think that what I'm hearing from everybody isn't about Pearl Creek or Two Rivers or Ileson or TIC. All of these schools are community centers. They're hubs. And it all comes down to what Amber was saying about a feeling of community and safety. And if we don't feel safe, we don't learn. I had a mentor teacher years ago who told me, "There's three things that are important about education. The first one is relationship. The second one is relationship. And the third one is relationship." And when we grow our schools and we, when we shut schools down and pile kids into new environments with full classrooms, and I've got a pretty full one right now. I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to think now, like, how about five more, 10 more? We are going to find it more and more difficult to nurture those kids with real relationships because we're going to be drowning. And I have very high standards in my room. I want my kids to be challenged. I want them to be loved. I want them to have opportunities for creative learning. And if your school room is so full and it's so loud, it's very hard to be effective. So I feel like it comes down to our really valuing education and getting back down to that fundamental thing that kids need to feel like somebody's really looking at them and seeing them, each kid in the class. And I'm going to, I'm not going to walk away from this mess, but I am going to implore you to not think that the answer in our society is to look away from education and think that it doesn't matter because it ultimately is the absolute core of who we are. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, guys, for being here and letting us speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Last chance, and then I'm going to close. I'm sorry, you can only speak once. But if there is somebody, and you're welcome to bring moral support.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Marmi Poe, P-O-A-G-E. I'm a day custodian since 2007 at Ticasuk Brown. And I built up a new family there. And as a day custodian, it's fully support to all of them to be as safe where they do education, especially the kids that really need help, especially when their parents, it's like going to school, dropping them off to school, and we make sure that they're all in safe, that every time they need help and they're sad going down, try to cheer them up because it start in their home. They're so sad. But when they get at TIC Brown, when we're speaking with them, trying to give them a warm heart and cheer them up. And that's what make them enthusiastic to learn more for the education. That's what I see in Ticasuk Brown since I've been there. And contracting the custodian, we don't know the safety of these kids because we don't know where all those contracted come from, what their background or whatnot that we're... I'm kind of worried because my daughter go to school. And when I see a new people, it's like, for me, it's like I'm not safe. You know, this community is, really needs backbone, especially with all the kids. You just focus on the kids, the future that we have. Hopefully, you can do something about it. I really appreciate that you all listened to our speak today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Flora Roddy, R-O-D-D-Y. I am here to speak for the support staff from all these schools that can't be here today because they're either, one, working right now at their first job with the school district, or they're working one or two other jobs because support staff are the lowest paid in the school district. We used to range from a grade one to, I don't even know what the top is. But the grade one and the grade two, I believe, in the S contract are no longer even existing because they've already been written out of the budget. Contracting out custodians has been tried in other districts. It has not worked in other districts. They tend to go back to hiring the people who know their schools and know the care that each school needs. They are there to support the teachers, the students especially. I think, I don't know if they brought it up today, but Ryan Jim is named after a custodian. They're not just the cleaners of the building. They are part of the community. They coach basketball. They mentor students. They give some of the students something to do when they have nowhere to go. They have no one else to talk to. They build relationships with students. And this is not just custodians. This is all the staff in the schools. She doesn't have it now, but my little granddaughter has a sign that says, "What school will I go to?" She will be four, or she'll be five in November, but she won't get to go to school until the year after because she has a November birthday. If you close Ticasuk Brown, she wants to know, where will she go? And my other grandchildren are here also. Two of them have gone K-5 through Ticasuk Brown. And one of them is currently in first grade, and one's in fifth. And they've been doing art on the floor and on the chairs while they've been sitting here. I'm proud of most of the night that they've been quiet. They have done a little bit of running around. But for a four and a six-year-old, I think they've done pretty well. And I am a product of K-12 education in the Fairbanks School District. I went to kindergarten through senior graduation at North Pole. Save our schools.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll return around 9:15. Maybe it's a little bit more than that. We are back from recess. If board members could return to the dais. The next item on our agenda is the, did we have a Borough Assembly Report? I heard maybe, okay, just confirming. So is the president's report? So mine will be rather brief tonight, but I will say I will make closing comments. So I, after hearing all of this wonderful testimony that was heartbreaking, I did get to spend my day doing something truly wonderful. I joined Ms. Kate Hall, who is our Executive Director of SPED, as well as some members that work at Fairbanks Nissan, to go around to many schools in our community and show our appreciation to our special education staff. And by staff, I mean everyone, which was something really important when this plan was being devised. And credit goes to Ms. Hall. This was her baby that was built out. And then Les Nichols, who, a Fairbanks Nissan, who really made it happen. So today and then also tomorrow, I will get to go around to some other schools. We were able to deliver to all of our special education professionals, support staff, SLPs, OTs, resource teachers, everyone. So over 350 people, free oil changes and a month of classes at Sung Dog Fitness. My two children joined us and also let teachers choose from whatever stickers for their water bottles they might want. As a former teacher myself, I really thought the stickers were necessary. And I was so glad to be able to be a part of this community partnership and showing our appreciation to a section of our educational community that does so much work and works tirelessly. And often, we talk about long hours, and we talk about going above and beyond. Today, I learned, there are so many schools, and I want to say, Kate, correct me, it's Midnight Sun that has combined their IR. Is that, is Kate still over there? She's gone, darn. I believe it's Midnight Sun, who has combined their IR. So they now have 24 students in their IR classroom, all the way, you know, K through fifth. And they are doing a tremendous job with one certified staff and still getting their students included in the classrooms. And the paraprofessionals in that class were amazing and upbeat. And so much, so much thankfulness to our special education staff across the district. And I'm really excited to be able to see more of them and thank them in person tomorrow. And I think... And I think the, the last bits, I'll mostly just say thank you to the, the community that came out tonight. And thank you for sharing your experiences and your thoughts and your ideas and all of that with us. It, it hurts, but I think it's the responsibility of every single member sitting up here to listen and to hear those words as we debate these very difficult topics. So I, I so appreciate people taking the time out of their lives to do that and share that with our community. With that, the next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy. I'd like to thank the community for showing up tonight. My hope is that we can carry this energy, emotion, and our stories forward and our advocacy efforts with our representatives at the state level and our borough assembly members as eight years of underfunded schools has led us to this budget challenges we face today. I'd like to thank the parents and guardians and our educators that participated in parent-teacher conferences this week. I was able to make it out to a few schools to connect with educators and families. And it's just great to see the conversations that are taking place in our schools. We know that active participation from guardians and families with their children's education is a critical step in ensuring student success. And so thanks to all the educators that put on parent-teacher conferences this week. Information went out to families this week regarding our report card to the public. This is one way our district informs families about their student's school. The purpose of those, this report is to share accountability in a public and transparent way so we can identify our strengths and areas for continued improvement. One highlight from our district is that our overall attendance rate of 90% is a 2% growth from last year. We've also shown some increases in our reading scores that Assistant Superintendent Laplante and Executive Director Chain Peem will share with the board later tonight in their Reads Act report. The Balancing Act tool that I've told the board about is going live tomorrow. So Balancing Act, if you haven't heard, is a budget simulation tool that the district has been working on rolling out, and it will become live tomorrow. The simulation tool will provide community members with hands-on access to our budget and to be able to submit feedback. So you'll actually be able to manipulate the revenue sources and the cuts to provide a balanced budget, taking into account the $29 million deficit that we're currently facing. A reminder that our annual school climate parent survey is live. The survey is anonymous. It takes about 10 minutes to complete and results are used to understand and improve the educational climates in our school. The parent survey closes on Sunday, March 10th, so if you haven't filled it out, please do so. I'd like to thank our donors from the past month who have contributed more than $1,000 to our schools. Impulse Electric, Mount McKinley Bank, Anne and Richard Tremelio, Gary and Sue Wilken, Fairbanks Central Labor Council, Alaska Dreams, Inc., and Rachel Seymour. As we heard earlier tonight, Music in Our Schools Month is kicking off next week. It starts on Tuesday, Tuesday, February 27th in North Pole High, and then goes almost every day through March 7th, March 7th. So lots of music opportunities in our schools in the next couple of weeks. So please get out and support our musicians in our schools. Also, Annie, the musical opens on Thursday this week out at North Pole High. So if you'd like to see great musicals, I encourage you to check out our students out in North Pole. A reminder that we have a community forum at Lathrop High School next week on the 27th at 6:00 PM. This will be a great opportunity to have a basic budget overview. We'll talk a little bit about the Balancing Act tool, and then we'll have some roundtable conversations for folks to provide feedback to the district on the current budget. I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the gravity of the conversations we've been having regarding our budget constraints and the potential closures of schools. These discussions are undoubtedly difficult and emotional. I want the community to know that I love each and every one of our school communities, and it's extremely difficult to recommend, recommend cuts. And as I've said before, cuts impact the lives of real people in our community and the education that we're able to provide our students. As the Board of Education continues to do the hard work of making cuts and balancing our budget, we eagerly await our state legislature to step up and do their jobs to fulfill their constitutional responsibility and adequately fund education for the students of the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. Thank you to those who continue to advocate on behalf of our school district as our kids do deserve an excellent education every day, and it's getting harder and harder to accomplish this mission without a meaningful increase to the base student allocation. In closing, one of the best questions of the night is how do we turn this around? It was a great question. I want everybody to remember the moment, the energy, the pain, the tears that we experienced tonight and take that with, take that with you and to the ballot boxes fall and elect representatives at all levels that support public education. And that concludes my remarks.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Superintendent Minert. Just in terms of the public report card, I had noted that one of the tabs is about the NAEP exams, and which are often cited that Alaska's not doing particularly well. But I don't know if you had a chance as you went through them. My question is, or observation and your thought on it, is that the scores that were listed, and they're only for Alaska as a state. We don't get any individual breakdowns. They're actually very close to the national averages. And I want to look into this more in terms of whether there's significant difference. But I thought that was very telling despite the narrative that others may use with the NAEP exam, which we don't see, but we don't get any results for. But those, those scores, very similar to the national average.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, and I did notice the same trend. And at some point in the spring, I'd love our senior analyst, Elisa, to have more conversations about that and provide us some information on what that means. Because as you do look at those numbers, they are very, very close. And so potentially helping us change the narrative that Alaska students are doing great. He'll also share with the board, which I think he shared before, Alaska students show a much greater growth trajectory than students in other states. And that's something that's not always captured in that raw score.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is information and reports. And there's going to be a little shuffle due to allowing our public testimony to go on. We had some presenters that needed to leave. So the Durham Transportation Report will be moved to our next regular meeting, which I believe is March 5th. And so now we're going to move to item number two, which is our INSPIRA audit report. The report will be presented by Kelly Evans. Kelly is an auditor for the National School Public Relations Association, INSPIRA, as well as Chief Communications Officer of the Clovis United Unified School District of California, and also being joined by Ms. Rebecca Herbie.
Good evening. As I was introduced, this is Kelly Evans, and I'm the Chief Communications Officer for a school system in the state of California of about 43,000 students. I also serve on the, I have served on the National School Public Relations Association Board as president and other officer roles over the course of a 26-year career in public education and school communications, and hold advanced degrees in those areas as well. And I was very pleased to be able to work with Executive Director Herbie and Dr. Minert to conduct an audit of the Fairbanks Unified School District, or North Star Borough School District, as just helping look at communications, look at your communication program and the challenges and opportunities facing your school system. And so I want to get started. I'm going to share my screen. I would so much prefer to be there in person with you at your meeting tonight. But given that I am in California and you are in Alaska, we're not doing that. But I hope you can all see as I'm getting ready to share this. And I get to be a small dot on your screen as opposed to taking over all of that space since that's always a little, a little scary. Make sure that this goes to, okay, so there we go. And I will leave time at the end for questions and things too. First, I do want to commiserate with you as a board and your community. The conversation that you've been engaged in this evening is a painful one. I think as, as you are experiencing the budget shortfalls that actually will show up as part of what I, I'm going to report on as well, just knowing that every one of your school communities are those special communities and that the decisions that you're discussing and having to face the grim reality of ongoing budget cuts is not pleasant. And I know that you've heard from your community this evening that with compassion and care and ensures you move forward, those same conversations will be held as you make some difficult decisions in the role as board members and as the school administrators. I will say that communications and how your team communicates, how your administration communicates, and the, the views of your community toward your school system are so critically important as you do face those challenging hurdles that really can overcome other communities when not handled with the care and attention and transparency that they require to remain a trusted entity in your community as you face those difficult decisions and difficult choices they have to make. So I have prepared this presentation well in advance of listening to your speakers tonight. I have been myself tuned in on your livestream to hear just the perspectives of your community as, as you move forward. And so you will see that some of that's reflected in what we learned as we did our audit last fall in Fairbanks. You've already heard a little bit about me and the rest of the auditing team that was behind me in this. There was a scope survey conducted. Naomi Hunter, who is another of our INSPIRA colleagues, was involved in that, and I'll speak a little bit to the survey in a few minutes. And then the INSPIRA auditing staff there in the Maryland office is made up of Melissa Graham, who's the Associate Director of the National Association, and Susan Downe runs the communications audits for INSPIRA. They backed me up. They were heavily involved in the final recommendations and the final report that we have now reviewed with Superintendent Minert and with Ms. Herbie and her team and are pleased to share with the board tonight. I'm going to go relatively quickly because I think you've already had a long night. You received this report and this presentation in advance, so I think you had a chance to look at it. So I'm going to move relatively quickly through the slides so that we can leave time for questions at the end of this. So just a heads up that I will move at a quick clip, and then we'll have a conversation at the end. So what is an audit? Really looking at taking that critical step back from your regular day-to-day of communicating and allowing some analysis of both your internal communications and the product that's coming out of your communication as a school district, the community perception and needs and wants, and how your community is interacting with your school system. Also looking at staff members and how they are perceiving the district and their attitudes toward decisions that are made, feelings toward your school system as a whole, as well as the administration. We've talked to a number of people, but it really is a guideline, a guidance. I think we could spend the whole time here tonight just reflecting on the conversation that you just had with your community or the things that you heard from your community. But really, this audit is designed to give you some guidance, some, some direction. You have a wonderful team there in Fairbanks, great professionals in Executive Director Herbie and her team who have periodically reflected. This is not the first audit that INSPIRA has done in Fairbanks over time. So really good to be able to look at how your system has changed, how your communities changed over time relative to communications. But really, what we hope that you do with this information that we've put together for you is to use it to reflect on things that you can maybe increase efficiencies around and adjust and respond to the real reality of circumstances in your community and the direction of your current leadership, and be able to then turn around and make some really positive steps toward continuing and increasing the transparency, the relationship, the trust level that your community has in your school system. And so the recommendations I'm going to talk about tonight really are looking at that. So what are the elements of the audit? This is a comprehensive assessment of your current communication efforts, the effectiveness that it's perceived by the community and through the external eyes of a group of experts in school public relations. And then again, that snapshot of current reception throughout the district. It gives you some baseline research that you can then move forward and using and allowing to inform and shape decision-making moving forward. So we start with a review of district materials, your current communication program. I spent hours to, over time, working with Director Herbie to look at your print and digital publications, your policies around communication, your strategic plan and goals that you have as a school system, looking at communication plans where they're in place, your programs that inform and direct your communication, looking at media coverage of the district. We did extensive analysis. One of the images on my screen are, are media analysis where we looked at stories in the news media about Fairbanks and your schools there. Looking at your school and district websites, your social media channels, any and all ways that you are communicating and using as tools to communicate with your community. We did an effectment of those, their effectiveness, their reach, and their targeted nature, and then gave some input as to how they can either continue, be improved, be more efficient, et cetera. Another element of the audit is the scope survey. This was conducted from September 6th through the 20th of last fall. We're going now to faculty, staff, parents, families, community. And we actually had some student participation. And this just gives you a quick summary of the results of that survey in total population, the number of surveys completed. We do thrive for certain margins of error in that survey. And so you see both the margin of error that was achieved and the margin of error that's the target. You got over your, or under your margin error with parents and families. Your community was just slightly off, and same with within 1% to 2%. So still very valid information, really important when you look at the results of the scope survey to consider those in the context of everything else that we did. It gives you a great perspective, and it's a nice little cross-check for some of the things that we did identify. So you can dive deeply into the details of that survey, but for now, just know that it really laid its a layer of the whole audit. And there were also opportunities for open-ended comments that I had to come through and read. So prior to then doing focus groups, the focus groups and interviews that were done in October also are a key part of the audit. This is where I sit down by Zoom, in, in the case of Fairbanks, and for an hour at a time, talk in depth with groups of parents, big groups of students, your community stakeholders, your teachers and other educational team members, your site leaders, classified employees, as well. There, we're looking at, again, perceptions, lived experience, the reality of both the communication tools that people are interacting and engaging with and receiving from Fairbanks, and also looking at how they interact with them and their perception toward them, if they feel effective, if they feel like they're achieving the goals that were stated. Then in the interviews that I also had with internal communications staff, with Executive Director Herbie and her team, Superintendent Minert. I did talk to several board members in that as well. So overall, 10 focus groups, about four additional meetings, about 14 different meetings held over the course of a three-day period, two-week period. We had a couple that we had to reschedule to go again deeper into those, the communication world in Fairbanks. So a couple of key findings that came out of all of that, I want to start with the positives and things you heard a lot in already, that you have caring teachers and support staff. There was definitely a perception overall that people feel that your school system and your educational team care about their students, care about the community. There was a lot of talk of smaller class sizes that can be achieved in your school system. And value of that, a lot of parents reflected on the fact that they really appreciated a little bit of a smaller. A lot of parents reflected on the fact that they really appreciated a little bit of a smaller class size. Coming from another state, I can tell you that even your largest of class sizes are still small class sizes relative to many other places in the nation. And then there was a lot of discussion and comments about your current administration and feeling like the district is headed in a positive direction under Dr. Ryan's leadership and really feeling like there was a growing understanding, an increase in understanding of Fairbanks leadership on the needs of the district. So this looks at a couple of slides with the data that points from our scope survey. I just provided these as points of reference. There's a lot more to the scope survey. I'm not going to go line by line here. But as you can see, the overall perception of the school, 100% of parents, employees, and community members who rated excellent and above average, average and below average. I will say that in regard to all of your overarching data, Fairbanks fell on the lower side of the national averages. We take those scope surveys and we benchmark them across the nation. And so it gives you a context of how Fairbanks is doing relative to other school systems. And what we saw was, well, a lot of times there was good ranges that you knew, and they were always looking just shy of the normal part of the national average. So other perceptions and other key findings, a lot of concerns expressed at all levels of the organization. And again, I think what you've been experiencing the last couple of days and tonight, concerned about the impact of long-term budget challenges, both on staffing, staff strength, being about great staff members. But the flip side of that is concern over what long-term budget challenges will do to staffing levels and programs that are being offered. Another, again, the reverse of the positive, that there's a variety of opportunities for students. But when the budget lines up next to those, there's a constant state of unease and concern that was just reiterated repeatedly in focus groups by both staff members, parents, and community members about what does the future hold for your school system. Lots of comments from our military families, and you had a good showing of military families on the focus groups. And they obviously bring a different perspective to your system than they've seen maybe a number of school systems around the nation. And so there was some things expressed in a few focus groups around just the quality of the education system relative to what they have experienced in other parts of the community. So that was, again, a theme of just needing more information, needing to have a better understanding of how the quality of the schools is really held with the district. Another common thread that I thought was important to pull out in this conversation is really about individual loyalty to schools. So the loyalty of your community, the brand of Fairbanks really ties to its individual schools as opposed to the district as a whole. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but that really becomes problematic when you're looking at decisions that then heavily impact a single school community because the trust and the confidence that your community has is held with the local school, not with the greater Fairbanks school system. And so when you start to impact people at a local level, they don't really have that trust capacity for the district as a whole. There's not a strong district brand that we notice throughout. And again, we're going to talk a little bit more about that later. Decision-making seen as remote, lacking a voice of stakeholders, that was something that also was a theme that just would be concerning, long-term. So some more data points, I'm going to move more quickly because again, I know it's been a long night for you. We did also conduct a SWOT analysis. If you're familiar with SWOT analysis, looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges ahead or threats, internal focus for your strengths and your weaknesses, external focus for your opportunities and threats to the organization. So within this, I pulled out the key things in each of those areas. So again, strengths, we talked about, enthusiasm, ability to modernize community behavior, video storytelling was one. Weaknesses, I'll just pull out again a couple. The frequent changes in your leadership over the last couple of years has led to person inconsistency in communication, inconsistency in support for the concept of transparent communication in the community, which is again a challenge and create problems then for the district as a whole. And then that undefined brand that will become problematic when you're having to make some decisions that impact individual school communities. And then at the opportunity threat level, a couple of things to pull out there in your opportunities column, really looking at a resilient community, an independent spirited community, definitely a desire to see your local schools succeed. The support that you have available through the local military bases, some additional teams that can come alongside students and their families as well as the district, community organizations that really want the school system to succeed, want to be good partners there. And then again, your threats. Two things I want to draw out here is they do play into some of the recommendations that we made on the communication side of things, and that is the high mobility among military families. You have a large percentage of parents who don't have a long history in this Fairbanks system, and they also oftentimes are leaving, they're reassigned around the country. And so your community that does not have students in the system are becoming more disenfranchised. We looked at audits over time, and we looked at these feedback areas where you're not getting the typical positive energy that comes from people who maybe don't have students in school themselves, but they encounter people who do and hear about good things that are still happening, continues to build kind of a trust cycle in the system. And because of the transient rate of a lot of your population, you're missing an opportunity that is often present in your systems there. And then again, those perceived budget constraints that just are really challenging. I know as one of the budget results was cutting the print shop in recent years, and the lack of any print communication is a component factor in that disconnect of your population who doesn't fit in with them. And so in taking a look at all of that, we also then took all the information that we looked at in audit, all the analysis that we did, all the focus groups, and we look at benchmarks, benchmarks of best practices in several critical function areas. They're listed on the left-hand side of the screen. Planned communication, internal communication, parent-family communications, marketing and branding, crisis communication, bond finance election campaigns, and diverse equitable and inclusive communications. You have a well-established communication program overall, getting close to exemplary. But in those measures of standards, our recommendations are really looking how to bring you into the exemplary mode where you're going to be on cylinders for communication efforts. So there's recommendations then in multiple areas. Again, for lack, you've had this information in the mix, so I'm just going to read the top structure and the recommendations, the numbered bullets underneath give you the details of those, and then we'll open it up for comments and conversation. The first recommendation is to create structures and develop plans to support the communication function in your district and recognizing the budget constraints that you're facing. I would really, really encourage and caution at the same time that you can't sacrifice the communication priority and focus as you're dealing with budget issues because it's a self, then becomes kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy of not being able to maintain the level of transparency and having a whole team that's on message, moving forward very consistently in the community, keeping that trust as you're making some significant changes. So something really important to keep in mind. Recommendation two is really looking at appropriate marketing strategies in the strategic communication efforts. When you talk about budget cuts, I know one way that you can bring revenue into a school system is by bringing students into that school system and looking at ways that you can focus on that, focus on maybe turning the budget dial a little bit in the right direction is by preserving the number of students that you would otherwise lose potentially to charter schools, to homeschool options, to other alternatives. And a good and strong bidding strategy really helps with that, helps tell the community the needs of your school system. Creating and implementing a budget communication strategy. Dr. Minor and I had lots of conversations around this, in particular of really employing some strategies that help all of your community understand the issues that you're facing around budget, solutions, the system, the budget balancing software that he was talking about earlier is a great way to allow your community to get in and get hands-on in your budget to really understand the scale and scope of what you're looking at. So looking for a lot of ways and a lot of number strategies that we recommended there around in the same, your ability to bring the community along about some of the budget cuts that are having to be made are really, in some respects, being important, only by decisions that are being made outside your school system at the state level. Recommendation four is around maximizing communication potential of the school districts and the school-level websites. Some good recommendations there about just in the way your school sites are maintained, your websites are maintained, how to do some things on an annual or monthly basis to make sure that individual school sites are very much well updated, easy to digest, great hubs for communication. It's a real low-cost way to be able to do that, to maintain the communication, build the communication program. Recommendation five is around increasing transparency of decision-making processes, particularly the role that employee input plays in the decisions. This is something I run across a lot in school systems. There's mechanisms to get to gather input, but then it falls short of giving the closed loop back to the community of really letting people know where their input is going. In, for example, budget processes where you have input that's paired with you, giving visible places that the community can see how that's impacting decision-making. And so there were other individual recommendations as well. I'm going very quickly. I apologize. I'm probably sounding like I'm talking like an oxygen ear almost. I want to make sure we get through this quick. Recommendation six is around implement standardized parent communication practices across buildings and departments. And so important again, as a system, when you're having to bring community along, made up of individual buildings, made up of individual buildings spread across a large geographic region like Fairbanks at Borough is, to be able to establish and set expectations for some real consistent standardized communications so that parents, if they have students in one building or another, multiple buildings, can know, you know, where do I go to find information? Is it going to be regularly updated? Who is it that I'm regularly going to hear from? How do we get information from the school system? And have some consistency across your schools is really critically important, all the way down to the classroom level. So there was a whole bunch of recommendations and action steps. Recommendation seven was create protocols for staff with regular communication responsibilities. This is focused on making sure that you're maximizing the staff that you have, site leaders that you have in my focus groups. And I had a great conversation with many of your site leaders who were really looking for resources to help inform them, to be good communicators. They recognized that they are critical to their teams' understanding what's happening at the district level, but they felt like at times they lacked the real clear direction as to what should they be saying? What should they not be saying? What are those key messages to be consistent? So that's where this recommendation revolves around. So those, we kept it to seven, and obviously recognizing that this is something that takes years. I don't recommend saying, okay, we're going to get all these done in the next two months. You have a lot, Director Herbie has a lot on her plate. It's really just looking at how can you start piecing together within those seven recommendations and things to implement shortly or refine what you're currently doing to make it more efficient, streamline things. I really tried to focus on areas that I felt would be low-cost and be able to, again, increase efficiencies in your system because I recognize that the era that you're living in, the time that you're living in, not being able to throw balls at something, you're really looking at trying to be much more effective in the limited resources you have. And so that's really where we lay this particular presentation. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and go back to just me being big on the screen myself and open it up for questions.
Are there questions from the board? Ms. Marotti?
I wanted to first say thank you to Ms. Herbie and to the auditor and the team that made up the audit group. It does sound, that last piece where it said that it's not just the communications team to take on these seven recommendations, and I think it's going to be a whole team effort. So through the chair, could we request like what that's going to look like on our side in like a few months after we've processed all this and gotten through the budget season and whatnot? Just to come back and see how the board can support the team as a whole to accomplish those seven recommendations?
Yeah, we'd love the opportunity to do that. And so, yeah, in a couple of months, we'll come back and have kind of a plan together in terms of how we might accomplish some of these recommendations in the next three to five years.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes, I'd like to just reiterate the thank you for all the work to everybody involved with this. I'd also just like to kind of pinpoint, there's a few things in here in some of the considerations and examples on how we can improve things that Dr. Minor is already doing and already stepping up with, and I just really appreciate that. So thank you, Dr. Minor.
I do have one myself. So you've given us some great recommendations. Is there any place that you would suggest that we look for, that you know does this right as a model for how to communicate around the budget or a brand communication? How we do that better as a district? Sometimes it helps to see someone else who already does it well.
Yes, actually, in my report, I gave under each of the recommendations a list of examples. And so if you were to dive deeper into the report itself under each of the recommendations, there's a list of links that go back into some best practice models, especially around budget. We gave a number of resources of other school systems around the nation who have done some innovative things. For example, some devoted websites that lean heavily into graphics and things that make the budget process really simple to understand. And so if you were to look, for example, just on page 52 of the report itself, there are some examples with Jackson County, Georgia schools, Issa Paul Washington, Adena and Soda, Lynden and Linnonway on the one related to action step 4.1, determining key features identifying what would be appropriate for Fairbanks. So each of the action steps have multiple examples.
Thank you so much. That's so helpful.
Move to extend to 10:30.
Are there any other questions from the board? I don't think we have any for you, but thank you again for such a comprehensive report, and I really appreciate knowing that those links are there. I hadn't gone through the larger book yet, and I will. Thank you again.
I appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I wish you all the best. And I, again, speaking from experience, know that school remedians can often go very long. And it really is a testament that you want to listen carefully and give your community plenty of time to share their thoughts. That's a hallmark of good communication, is allowing people to share their feelings with you and deal with it. And you're still going to have the same tough choices to make, I'm sure, but just encourage you in that respect. So I hope you all have a cup of coffee and have the ability to have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Human Resources Substitute Incentive Plan. Ms. Ivory Daniels-Inglefritz, Human Director of, Executive Director of Human Resource Department, will provide a look at the Substitute Incentive Plan.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our work group, our substitute employees. We often talk a lot about our teachers and our support staff and principals and our admin team, but one of the groups that we work very closely with and that we adore and love is our substitute employees. So I was happy to be able to take an opportunity to highlight them. And so I was asked by Dr. Minor to give an overview of our incentive program that's happening in March, but I took it as an opportunity to provide the board just more information about the work group in general. So talking a little bit about what we have labeled as March Madness. We have a Human Resources We have a human resources coordinator in our department, Robin Anderson, that oversees our work group for substitute employees. And so she worked on this initiative for the month of March. And so what we're doing is incentivizing for substitutes to pick up more assignments. And based on the number of days worked, the full days worked during that month would provide an extra incentive amount to the substitute employee. And then also on March twentieth and twenty-first, we have professional development that's going to take a number of teachers out of the school building. And so we wanted to provide continuity for our students. So we were also providing an additional incentive on those two days to help substitute employees pick up those assignments to help with our schools and our absences on that day. So for substitute employees, if they work twelve to sixteen days plus on March twentieth and twenty-first, they have an opportunity to earn an additional three hundred dollars during the month of March. And so we've been looking at different ways to to provide incentives to our substitute employees over the the last few months. And so this is one that Robin Anderson worked on and that I'm happy to have an opportunity to highlight with you all today. And what I ask is that we go out and we just communicate this to our substitute employees and to our community to say, hey, do you know about this great opportunity during the month of March? And hopefully that we can get more and more substitutes and even folks that are interested in being a substitute employee, if that's something that helps to draw them in and just want to learn a little bit more information about it, then we welcome them to contact us so that we can get them hooked up and get them set in the right direction. So that's it. Unless there's any questions.
Did you want to describe the the incentive plan?
Well, it did a little bit. So essentially, the more days that you work is provides a more of a monetary incentive for you. And so my computer shut down, so hang on a second. So if you work six days during the month of March, you get seventy-five dollars extra added on to your pay. If you work seven to eleven days, a hundred and fifty. And then twelve to sixteen days would be a two hundred and fifty dollar additional amount for the month of March. And then March twentieth and twenty-first would be additional fifty dollars bonus per day for those days as well. So like I said, if we have a substitute employee that works the full month of March, including March twentieth and twenty-first, they'll have an opportunity to earn an additional three hundred dollars for the month of March.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
So getting kind of a consensus, since I think board members have a lot to say in their closing comments, we are also going to push our Alaska REEDS information report to the March fifth meeting. So that information will come out then. I believe then the next item on our agenda is Board and Superintendent's closing comments. Are you ready, Ms. Maple? All right.
It's jumbled. I made a list, so it's not going to be a cohesive, orderly. I'm just going to go through the list. I, first off, just want to say that I share in everyone that came tonight and gave testimony that was expressing anger, frustration, sadness, just at the base level that nobody should have to be here pleading for their school not to get closed. We shouldn't be here making that decision, and nobody should ever have to show up and plead for that. And so and there's not, I'm confident not a person up here that believes differently. So I am sorry that it's even where we are and grateful for those of you that showed up, but wish that you didn't. Some of what I am going to touch on, and I promise it's not actually that much, is rooted in, I don't expect anybody in the public to call into all of our meetings or listen to all of the budget work sessions. So sometimes, you know, if you're only listening to one meeting or only seeing stuff on social media, which is totally fair, you might not have the whole picture. And so there were a few things that were brought up in testimony that I just want to circle back to. And the first one, and they're in no particular order. The first one is, I just want to make it really clear that there's nobody up here keeping a tally of how many people speak in defense of each school or of each program. You know, somebody gave testimony early on about how she was here as a representative for all of the parents that couldn't make it out tonight for various reasons, whether it's that they didn't know this was happening, that they simply are unable, whatever, it doesn't matter, that there are kids in every house that need to be spoken for. And, you know, we saw Two Rivers join on a call and there were, there was a collection of people in that gym there speaking up for their school out in Two Rivers. Just because they weren't here doesn't mean we didn't hear it or that it doesn't count. I, sorry, there's one I can skip. I did want to touch on there, I heard a lot of mentions of climate surveys specifically connected to Pearl Creek. And I wanted to just share and make sure that it is known. I've been poring over those climate surveys as well, and there are wonderful positive surveys for TIC and for Two Rivers as well, that all three of those schools, if you if you put them next to each other, parents are happy and students are happy and staff are happy. So I want to make sure that we know that all of these schools that we're looking at are are loved, and there's nobody questioning that. I did want to say that I heard what I perceived as maybe a misunderstanding of where these, this proposal came from. I heard it suggested that the proposal came from the administration, that it was Dr. Minor's plan that he put forth. And I want to make it really clear that in a meeting, a meeting at the end, it was, I think, the beginning of February, that I remember explicitly, Mr. Burgess, Ms. Burnett, and myself, maybe other board members as well, requesting this plan, that we said, if if it's going to have to happen, it would be irresponsible to not consider it now. So this wasn't something that the administration said, hey, school board, do this. It was an ongoing conversation, and we requested this information. And Dr. Minor and his team put in a lot of work to give us as comprehensive of a plan as possible. We got the rubric ahead of time before seeing the results. It doesn't make the impact any less great or profound. Friday sucked for everybody. It really genuinely did. But I know that the board and the administration walked it out as intentionally as we thought we could, even if mistakes were made. I received an email that was talking about, you know, it feeling disrespectful, and I responded to that email saying, I believe that impact and intent are both equally important. And so I recognize that our intent was good, and that doesn't mean that the impact didn't hurt. And so we see that. There's always room to do better, and none of us, I speak confidently that none of us think that there's not, you know, room for improvement always. I did also hear some frustration for the lack of questions posed at the work session last night. And I wanted to just share that I think, I wonder if the understanding of that was that maybe that was the only time we would have the opportunity to talk with that group of people. And I wanted to make it really clear that it's not, that we will have more opportunities to have budget work sessions with those people at the table. And that saving some questions for later matters because it gives the administration time to explore different ideas that come up in meetings like this. It gives the administration ideas or opportunities to explore things that we suggest. So I hear that there's concern that we're not asking the tough questions, and I want to assure the public that we will and that we're working on finding the right questions and making sure that we get all of the information. The last thing, or close to last thing, legislators, I heard tonight that legislators say we aren't using the money correctly, and that's the defense for not giving us If the legislators want to direct how we spend the money, they can, they have that power. So if they want to fund us with targeted funding, they are able to do that. We are able to meet metrics and do all of the reporting they want. It requires them to actually come up with a plan or fund us in a way where they make those requests, and we can return that. So suggesting that we're just not using the money right, and that's the end of the story, and therefore there should be no more money, it's it's a it's a lame way out. I, all right, there's only like two more things written down. Sorry, guys. It was also suggested by a former board member that our advocacy was hardening legislators. And I want to be very clear that if a person advocating isn't just exactly what a legislator wants to hear, and that leads a legislator to punish kids by not funding education, that is a problem with the legislator and not a problem with the advocate. I, sitting up here, we all have different methods of advocacy. And the idea that one of those methods would be the fault of our schools not receiving education or not receiving funding is offensive, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring attention to that. Admin matters. I heard it over and over again, and I'm sitting across from administrators. I, my day job, I am an administrator. I have to defend in every grant I write that I deserve a paycheck. Our administrators deserve paychecks. Our administrators, it's not all so siloed. Our educators are functioning at a school because our administrators are functioning downtown or wherever their offices are. If we don't have people running payroll, if we don't have people that are processing HR, that are processing expulsions, that are processing, that if we don't have student support services working downtown, if we don't have IT working downtown, then everything else fails. And so looking at it as if it's admin against educators is a really dangerous, a really dangerous path because it takes all of us. And nobody thinks that we can look through this four hundred page budget and not look at admin. We absolutely are looking at admin. I think there was a four hundred thousand proposed cut to admin already, and that is before the board is going individually, line item by line item, and bringing questions back to Dr. Minor. And then my last thing, I touched on it when in a in a question earlier, but when we were in Senator Click Bishop's office, he said, he he taught me, I wasn't here for it, but he taught me about this uproar against Ileson getting closed that happened before my time, before I was up here, and that it was talked about on a national level, that when Fairbanks showed up and said, you're not going to close our Air Force Base, the whoever it was went back and said, we're not closing that Air Force Base. And he said, the way that we get education funding is a grassroots effort like that. And he said that, you know, us being in his office was great, but that what really mattered was everybody writing a letter. And he said, not a canned letter, not a copy and paste, but it just has to be a sentence, a paragraph of a personal reason why education funding matters to you and your family. And that it's, all of this legislation is still before the House. We have time. I wish we didn't. I wish it had gotten taken care of on Monday, but it didn't. And it didn't get taken care of today either, which means we have time. So write those emails, make those phone calls. I want to prove Click Bishop right, and I want our grassroots effort from Fairbanks to get funding on a state level for public education. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. I echo a good chunk of what Ms. Maple just said. President Hardy and I spent three days in Juneau, what, two and a half weeks ago now? Many conversations, many senators, many representatives, we met with everybody, geeked out on the whole Juneau thing, right? People running into this office and that office to have this conversation and that conversation, and just watching the way it worked. And some of those conversations were absolutely amazing and absolutely beneficial and probably some of the best conversations we had. There was a couple of conversations where I left the room going, I don't know if that did anything. And that's kind of disheartening and really disappointing to leave an office feeling that way. I often feel that education is like a Paula Abdul song, right? Two steps forward, two steps back. I really do. It it's a hundred percent true. We take two steps forward with great advocacy efforts, we get thrown two steps back because of this, that, or the other thing. I have said it in the news, Minor. I have said it out loud. I have screamed it from the rooftops, and I still, to this day, do not understand as a conservative person why conservatives and Republicans are so against funding education. It is something that incredibly infuriates me because our children, my three children, deserve just as much as every child in this in this whole entire state and this whole entire country does. I don't understand it. Education is not partisan, it it is a across all lines type of situation. This is not a bipartisan issue. This is not a issue for only one side or the other. This is an issue for everybody. And the fact that we have people out there who are a stand against with education, I don't know where it starts. I've been nice. I've been mean. I've been downright cruel. I've been the nicest person you can be. It doesn't matter. And to sit here and have my heart shatter because of these conversations, I am very much disassociated with emotion as much as I can be, and my core is rocked tonight. These conversations are not anything I ever wanted to be a part of, and I was a part of joint closing. My children were cubby bears. I never wanted to sit here and do this. I didn't wake up one day and say, it's time to rip that Band-Aid off, Dr. Minor, let's close some schools. It's not how this went down. These conversations have been happening since the fall. It finally took, like Ms. Maple said, three of us to say, hey, it's time to really, if this is really where we're going, we need to make this public and we need to get it out there. And the fact that we have assembly members and legislators telling us that this is a political thing, are you kidding me right now? We didn't wake up and say, hey, let's pull the chains of some people. We woke up and said, hey, we've got a serious issue on our hands. And we have families, and we have students, and we have teachers, and we have custodians who have bills to pay, who have mouths to feed, who have kids to educate, and we have got to figure out something. And if closing schools is what we need to do, then the public needs to know, the public needs to be involved, and we need to hear everybody. Because I'll tell you right now, I'm not ready to make a decision. I want to hear from everybody because this is huge. And it is just absolutely disheartening to sit here and hear rhetoric after rhetoric of things that are just wrong. Our admin are busting their butts off to get this budget straight, to help us understand this budget, to help guide us in decisions that we were, we were elected to make, decisions that we don't want to make and we have to. It's our job. It's what you elected us to do. And let me tell you, I didn't want to be elected to close a damn school. Sorry, I just, that's. I don't understand where everything went wrong with our legislature. But I urge every single one of you out there, as Ms. Maple has said, to get out there and advocate, call your legislators, send those emails, call your assembly members. Everybody needs to hear from everybody. We need a raise in the BSA. We need the Borough to come through on that ten million dollars. We need these things. We need the BSA, and we need those legislators to understand. And if Ileson is the way, this is not political, but if creating, like Click Bishop said, we need everybody to show up like they did for Ileson many, many moons ago before we were a part of this, that's what we need. We need outrage. We need the public to stand up and say, hey, don't make our board do this. I also heard something earlier about a comment about our schools being overcrowded. That is not the case, and that is online. You can go to our schools, you can see the the capacities of which we are at. Our schools are not overcrowded. Yes, we will be raising class sizes, but that doesn't mean our schools are overcrowded. Just something that kind of hit me, and I just needed to say that. I'm done ranting. I do look forward to making a visit out to Tukasuk on Monday. I'll be out there about nine thirty. I really look forward to that one. I've sent emails to Pearl Creek, Two Rivers, and Ileson, and I plan to go out there, meet with with the staff, see the students, see the classes, talk to everybody. I just, once again, urge everybody, we're in a Paula Abdul song right now, and I'm tired of taking two steps back. Please advocate.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Well, I ran for school board this summer on a platform of building community and bringing people together, and that's, that's what I value. And yet, almost immediately, perhaps unsurprisingly, I find myself in the position of fracturing school communities because of a budget deficit caused by years of flat funding from the state, flat funding that equates to a cut because of inflation. My campaign slogan was "Common ground for the common good," and I think tonight, we saw that there's some common ground in this community. We all agree that education should be funded. We all agree that we don't want to close schools, we really don't. But that's the position we've been put in. We've heard from people that, you know, there's allegations, our money isn't being spent well, that we have other options for cuts, or that we're not asking the right questions. And I implore you all to help us, give us your suggestions. If you think there's somewhere else we can cut, let me know what you think we can do. Maybe we can explain to you why we can or cannot make those cuts or shift the money in a certain way. If you have questions you think I should be asking, you think any of our, these board members should be asking of our administration, send them to us. I've been asking questions that the community has sent in, some of them that I didn't really feel comfortable asking, to be honest. But we need your help, we need to hear from you, and that's why I appreciate that everyone came here tonight. I asked the administration a few weeks ago to give us information on, on, on school closures, including educational impact and operating costs, and also the unquantifiable impact to communities. That's not a fair thing for me to ask of the administration, because again, you can't quantify that. But that's what we heard tonight, we heard about the impact, and it troubles me, it really does. And so, thank you all for coming in and sharing your stories and having that strength, it's important to do. Soon, we'll have our budgeting tool, Balancing Act, is that February 27th? Tomorrow, oh, it's sooner. So tomorrow, check out the Balancing Act, find your suggestions there, and, and send them in, please, we welcome it. And we need your help in other ways, too, we need you to contact your state representatives, tell them how much you value education and how important it is to you and to our community. Tell your personal stories that you told tonight, and the losses that you've experienced already or might experience under the current budget. A while ago, I visited one of our local charter schools with one of our state representatives. And when we were there, he asked the question, "Well, what are we buying when we fund education?" He said, "No one's broken it down for me." And so, you know, on a basic level, we can look at our budget, we're buying mostly staff, right? People to instruct students to keep our schools clean and safe environments. That's over 80% of our budget. We're buying jobs for those people simultaneously. We're buying a well-educated public, we're buying kids who know how to do math, who know how to read, who know how to write, who can do art, who can explore all sorts of interests in career technical education, we're buying a workforce. We're buying informed citizens who understand civics and democracy. We're buying curriculum and materials, sure, that help us to teach them those things. We're buying a functional society and strong communities. In short, we're buying democracy, we're buying a functional democracy, and that's why we need to fund education. It is the foundation of our society and of our democracy and of our communities. And I share the sentiments of my fellow board members, that this is heartbreaking to look at these, these documents, these pieces of paper, and, and see, you know, that, our options are so limited, because they are. So please, I, I'm begging the community to contact the state, contact the governor, your legislators, get your friends to do the same, get your other parents, students, get students to raise their voices. We need everybody in this, everybody together, because that's what community is. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
I'll start by moving that we extend the meeting until we can finish board and superintendent comments.
Second.
Not for me to speak that long, but... So I will start. Couple of business things first, is that the Budget Committee will be meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, the 22nd, and then they'll be giving their input to the board regarding the proposed budget, and we look forward to that conversation and that discussion. I wanted to address the Durham report. I realized that it wasn't able to be done tonight, appreciate Durham coming up and staying as long as he was able to. I will look forward to that report, I guess, at the next meeting, and I will send some questions, because I will be out of town for the next regular meeting. I will listen to the recording afterwards, sorry to miss that meeting. Also, in terms of the Alaska REEDS Act report, I don't know whether that would have addressed some of the questions that I sent in ahead of time to Superintendent, I think that was probably part of there, so all of the questions will be answered, so I will listen with great intent. The thing that I wanted to address, and it's an affirmation of the comments we've already heard from board members, and I am fully confident will be right in line with those that we will hear coming. But in preparing for this meeting, and I was thinking of the comments, they focused on a thought that it's been a hard couple of weeks for educators. It struck me, starting with the Governor's press conference, news conference, two weeks ago, and he dissed neighborhood school educators. And then I heard the testimony at the Assembly meeting last week. And I've gone to, and then I went to a town hall held by some legislators, which I really appreciate they're doing, and actually, the legislator facilitating that, I think, did a good job. But through, over the last two weeks, I've heard a lot of putting down educators, I've heard a lot of assumptions about what's happening in our schools, and even within that, references that schools teach this or that, teachers are doing this or that. Often enough, there was a comment, I read it in the paper, I saw it online, nationally. I've been in the schools, I've walked in the classrooms, I've listened to the teachers, listened to the principals, and I can say, what was being charged is not the case. I'm assuming it's well-intentioned interest in public education, but it's misinformation. And I felt for educators who might have also heard those charges, those allegations. It's long pattern, but I really want to say, wow, what a job our educators are doing. And I have to say, tonight was very uplifting. Yes, it was marked with frustration, with anger, and was rightly said, sometimes we have to be angry. It was marked with passion, with testimonials. We talk about relationships, that was evident tonight, from parents, from students, from colleagues, all across the board. People talked about our community. Yes, there were references to particular schools, but almost every comment said, "We're all in this." We're Fairbanks. And one of the things that really stood out to me was the laughter. We have to laugh. We have to enjoy each other's company, and I think that's what was so present in the room tonight, and with those online. It was a tone of partnership, of community, of team. And I think we can often overlook that, we can miss it, because it's what happens in our classrooms, in our school hallways. It's also the people who are not always seen right up front who make those differences, whether it's downtown, whether it's those who come in at night to take care of our buildings, but also take care of our community with the events, helping students, greeting them first thing in the morning. All of that was testified to this morning, or this evening. And so, as I am concerned for public education, I am also gratified by what I saw tonight, and I thank everyone who came out, those who have also listened online. But I really say thank you to our students, who are both the recipients and the motivation for what happens in our schools, in public education. And I greatly hope, I kept trying to think, hmm, how can I take the audio from this meeting and send it directly to the governor, to the legislators? Because they need to hear it, they need to know that it's true. They need to know that when they hear from our students, what does it mean to be in their school, to have their teacher, custodian, to a parent who says, "It is so important to me that I know my kids not only have me as a mom, my fam, or a family, immediate family, they have a much larger family, and there are members here who came tonight that showed that our community is a larger family." That is what it's all about. And so, I'd say, yes, let's keep ringing the bell, making sure our schools are welcoming to all students to take advantage, whether we send an email, whether we attend a local town hall when the legislators come to town, share our stories, share our testimony. It's important, so I'll end there, thank you.
Ms. Maradi?
Okay. I'm going to start a little differently. Last week, Ms. Maple and I joined about 100 school board members and 70, approximately 70 students from across the state to advocate on your behalf for a meaningful increase to education funding. We carried your stories and messages, many like we heard tonight, and we raised our collective voices at the state level. We gave a presentation on the value of partnering with families as longtime leaders across the state in grassroots and family engagement, I'm really proud of that. We personally met with 10 legislators and had the privilege to hear from an additional seven legislators over two days. What we gained from this time in Juneau was a deeper understanding of state-level politics, and that contrary to popular belief, many legislators do support increasing school funding, but they need your support, they need to hear from you, their constituents. I appreciated every conversation we had in Juneau, even the ones that I did not agree with what I was hearing, because I still learned valuable information, and I had the chance to have civil and productive conversations with those that hold the biggest keys to our funding. I want to thank ASB for assisting us getting down there, and I want to thank board member and parent Meredith Maple, and legislative committee member and parent Katie Yarrow for sacrificing time with their families and their day jobs to stand up for students, staff, and our community. Thank you to everyone that showed up tonight, those that told their stories, those that helped us understand their perspective, and a special thank you to all the students like Zoe Forer and Casey McGoffin and Olivia Clemente and many more, those are just the ones I got the names down real fast, that bravely came out and stood up for their schools and their peers. First, I want to say that I hear you, and I agree, this is an awful situation, but please know that the board asked the administration to look into this, so please redirect your frustration at the appropriate body. Next, please know that our issue is not mismanagement of district funds. We are audited multiple times a year, and all of our finances are public and transparently shared. Our issue is that our expenses have become more expensive, that's inflation. That includes benefits, utilities, equipment, supplies, everything it takes to run a school district has become more expensive, and that's normal. But also, our income has gone down significantly. We are funded approximately by three sources, state funding from our legislators, local funding from our Assembly, and a little bit from the federal government. And all three of those sources of funding have been reduced. At the same time, we are statutorily required to balance a budget, a budget that has now higher expenses and less income. So without increased funding from those sources, state legislators and Borough Assembly, we cannot legally balance without a significant cut like those the board was exploring tonight. So where do we go from here? We continue to advocate for our schools, for our students, for our staff and our communities, for an increase to funding so that our expenses can balance with our income. The state legislators and the Borough Assembly members hold all the cards, and if the majority of those bodies want to prevent the district from having to make $29 million in cuts so that we can balance our budget as we are legally required to do, they can make that happen, it's in their control. So how do you do this? You can email the governor and legislators at G O V dot A L L, all legislators, L E G I S, L A T O R. all legislators, L E G I S L A T O R S at alaska.gov. That's G O V dot all legislators at alaska.gov. You can email the full assembly at assembly, A S S E M B L Y at F N S B dot gov. That's assembly at F N S B dot gov. And you can keep showing up. You can keep standing up for your communities. You can be like the students that we heard from tonight, like Zoe, and Casey, and Olivia. Thanks.
Mr. Lopez.
First off, I just want to thank all the students for coming out today and giving their testimony, and I encourage everyone to, who, all the students out there, to please give their testimony later. We love to hear that from you. As you may have already noticed today, I have chosen to show spirit for my school, Ben Allison Junior Senior High. I'm currently a graduating senior at Ben Allison, and I've been there in the Allison area for around four years now. Coming here today, while I am a school board representative of the Fairbanks Board of Education, I'm also a very proud member of the student body at Ben Allison High School. As a board member, I understand the importance of everyone in their own roles. Every single one of you supports education, which is why you're here and work so hard to find solutions to our schools. Now, as a student at Ben Allison, I have to speak out on behalf of the staff, parents, and students being affected by a possible school closure. As a military child, I've been to so many schools and moved many times throughout my life, and a common theme for military children is resilience, which is also echoed tonight. Being able to have resilience in your life is crucial, and I just want to say, our military children have been through a lot and have gained that resilience. And with all they've been through, I think it's a real tragedy that their education is being threatened once again. Coming from a school in Texas with a similar size to Ben Allison, and the amount of support and funding given, it really shows the difference of education funding per state, and it is really sad. I chose to save my senior year at Ben Allison because of the community there, and how much of an importance education they have for us. I could have went to North Star College, I could have graduated early, I had the credits, and I could have even went to North Pole. While Allison doesn't get the support they need from the district, they continue to push on. I know, for example, several students are granted coveted internships through Allison Air Force Base, and that is due to the work that the community at Allison puts in to support our students. I also find this troubling for the staff, parents, and students who live in Salta and far away, where transportation may be an issue. I know the district is providing transportation, and I'm thankful for that, for all those individuals, but we do live in Alaska, and weather is always an issue. That's just a fact. I know you have a large decision to make, and I know for a fact that every single one of you, again, supports education, and will do the best to make a fair and equitable decision. And since Allison is a military base, who knows when the next mission comes, and the next population boom in the community, and we need to support the military. Because honestly, if future airmen and officers come to the base and see a closed school, they're going to think, "Oh, wow, this is the state of our education. Why did I bring my family here?" Or, "I don't want to bring my family here." And this creates a history which pushes people away from Allison Air Force Base, and therefore, less money for the school district, which is a realistic issue that could come. And for the last comments, I just wanted to state that I do not want to be the last representative, student representative for the school board from Ben Allison Junior Senior High School. So again, I encourage you all to make the best decision to help our district and all of our souls be treated with a fair and equitable education.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lopez. Dr. Minar, usually we don't have closing comments, but it is in our agenda that you can, so would you like to?
No additional comments this evening.
All right. I guess that's up to me. I went to a town hall this weekend, which was alluded to. I went, though, to speak to my personal representatives. And I actually happened to go to high school with some of those representatives, and they, I, I use the term, "I got a world-class education here in Fairbanks. I am born and raised. I went K through 12 in our public schools." And man, if my education wasn't fantastic. I am one of 12 kids, and I did not come from privilege. I did not come from highly educated parents. And Fairbanks made me. I loved school so much that I then only ever wanted to be a teacher. That was it. You asked me, it was a gym teacher, it was an elementary ed teacher, it was a sped teacher, it was some flavor of teacher, but that's what I knew I wanted to be, and I went and I made that dream happen. And that happened because of the phenomenal teachers in this community who shaped me and changed my life. So when people say, "Fairbanks Public Schools are failing," or "Fairbanks Public Schools don't produce amazing students," they're wrong. I, I've been a teacher in those classrooms. I know the students we produce. I've been with those educators. We do an amazing job, and we have consistently done an amazing job with less and less and less. And it has to stop. Tonight, a member of the public asked me for some homework, and as a teacher, I am uniquely able to provide that for you. SB 140 is on the House floor right now. There is a Finance Committee substitute, the legislators, who actually want to support our public schools and education could bring to the floor tomorrow. You will hear a lot of legislators trying to spin their insistence on only being able to support education by considering the Rules Committee substitute as them caring more about education than other educators, than other legislators. This is simply not true. These legislators were elected to represent our communities and the needs of those communities. They are their own separate branch of government and could stand strong for their constituents and communities and pass a clean bill without the divisive and unwanted amendments demanded by the governor. They could take up the Finance Committee substitute. They could stand by their votes and override any subsequent veto the governor might impose. Refusing to use their ability to override the governor's veto and claiming their hands are tied is just factually untrue. They are their own separate body of government. Their vote is our community's voice. And it is their responsibility to stand by those votes, even if that might be difficult to do. We ask people on the school board to make difficult decisions every day. We should expect no less from legislators who voted in a substantial pay raise last session. They can and should stand by their votes. I ask our public to contact their local representatives and encourage them to take up the Finance Committee substitute for SB 140 quickly, and to vote to pass a meaningful increase to the BSA and a substantial increase to transportation. The bill will also help our rural communities and their internet needs, and that is a time-critical bill. It is a bag grant. It needs to be passed now. I will leave you with a quote many of us likely know very well, probably because of a teacher somewhere along the way. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Second.